We can highlight some of our, our staff in the Milltown Pride Award.
Yeah, and prior to that, we're going to actually highlight some staff through the land acknowledgement tonight and start a new trend kind of as we head to 2021. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Grassif, and she's going to tell you a little more about this.
Thank you, Jeff. I acknowledge that the geographical region of Camas is located on the ancestral and territorial lands of the Chinook and Kowalts people, and that the Chinook are still fighting to be a federally recognized tribe on their own land. When we've talked about land acknowledgements before, one of the things that we recognize is the affirmation by the US Department of Arts and Culture. And what they say is acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way of showing respect and a step toward correcting the stories and practices that erase Indigenous peoples' history and culture, and toward inviting and honoring the truth. And that's how we begin this evening. The statement that you see here is one that you may increasingly see as part of people's email signatures. Another way to share that message in addition to our public spaces and meetings. And Jeff, if you'll advance to the next slide. As a way to share the, the land acknowledgement tonight, we want to feature a couple different pieces from different people in our system. And what we want to do also is to, to remind ourselves that acknowledgement is really just the first step, and it is necessary but insufficient. And so as a board and as a community, as we seek to do two things, one is to establish a connection with our Indigenous tribes, and also to engage in more deeper learning and sharing and action. And you'll see some examples of that this evening, but what we hope to do is carry this forward as a thread into future board meetings as well. So this first piece that we'll look at is a video that Liberty staff put together for Native American Heritage Month. They, along with us, acknowledge that a month is not sufficient to be able to share and learn, but it is a way to get us started and to remember. So this, this video was put together first, David Volk and Stephen Baranowski got together to think about ways that they could acknowledge Native American Heritage Month, and also working with Courtney Gross on how to compile the information and the video. And then Liberty staff volunteered to be part of this video as well. Once the video was done, it was shared via Parent Square, the Liberty Instagram, and the Liberty Facebook site. And so because different people, I see Jeff, you're hovering, I know, I'll get there, just a second. When, because different people voiced parts of this, the audio is uneven. So while Jeff starts to play it, I'm also going to put in the chat a link to the script so that you can actually read what is part of that, that video presentation. And Jeff, now we're ready.
We honor the city of Camas, named after the Camas Lily and the edible bulb that was a staple of the Native American diet.
We honor the Watlala, one of several bands of Chinookan speakers who treasured the Camas Lily bulbs.
We honor the different bands of Chinook-related Native Americans that came to this land to harvest salmon from the Columbia River.
We honor the land that the city sits on that had been frequented by both the Kowalts tribe and the Chinookan-speaking tribes, including the Watlala tribe, also called the Cascade Indians.
We acknowledge Native American interactions with the Columbia River and its landscape thousands of years prior to 1824.
We honor the Pacific Northwest Native American tribes' sophisticated trade networks that were established along the Columbia River.
We honor the Chinookan-speaking tribes for the near eradication of their people brought on by a virulent epidemic in 1829. By 1854, their entire population had been reduced to around 80 people.
We honor those remaining people who were absorbed into the Wasco tribe in the Dalles, Oregon, and forced off of their land and onto the Warm Springs Indian Reservation in 1855.
We acknowledge the Indigenous people who died as a result of colonization and to protest continued discrimination exploitation.
We honor the local tribes who were part of the Caleo Falls fishing area, the oldest continuously inhabited community in North America before the construction of the Dalles Dam in 1957, which submerged the settlements underwater.
We honor the techniques used by Native Americans that helped sustain the prairie ecosystem. These techniques increased plant diversity, maintained open areas for harvesting, and kept visibility for hunting.
We honor the ways in which Native Americans use the land's natural resources for medicine, food, tools, and other cultural purposes.
We honor the names that Native Americans gave many Washington cities.
We honor the 29 federally recognized tribes throughout Washington, and they are Chehalis, Colville, Kowalts, Ho, Jamestown Sklalom, Kalispel, Lower Elwah Klalom, Lumi, Makah, Muckleshoot, Niskwali, Nooksack, Porngamblesklalom, Pualip, Quiliut, Quinalt, Samish, Saksuitel, Shoal Walter Bay, Skokamish, Snoqualmie, Spokane, Squawson Island, Stilligwamish, Suquamish, Swinomish, Tulalip, Upper Skagit, and Yakima.
We honor the Duamish, Wannapum, and Chinook. These tribes are not recognized by the US federal government, but have had a long history in present-day Washington.
We acknowledge other Native American tribes who are still advocating for recognition by the federal government.
We acknowledge the challenges Native Americans have faced, both past and present, and the ways these citizens have dealt with these challenges.
We acknowledge the current revitalization of Native American cultures and identity.
We honor the resilience, history, and contributions of Native Americans in Camas in the Pacific Northwest.
So appreciation to the Liberty staff for both creating and sharing that resource. Our next one, I'd like to recognize CEA. Last, last spring, at one of the CEA rep councils, there was a motion that was made to start an equity team. And Shelley solicited volunteers from all members, and they started to meet virtually over the summer. They worked on their, their vision and mission statement and norms, and then they came up, they, they took off on their own and came up with a structure of a newsletter. So the newsletter that you see here was their November newsletter, that was their second one. The first one that they did, they did for Disabilities Awareness Month. And so the, the newsletters are designed to follow this format. What you'll notice is that there's always something to read, to watch, to consider, and then there's ways to get involved. There is also more to learn about. So both learning on our own and ways to be able to act in the world. You see the committee members on this slide as well. So just a shout out to CEA and the committee members that volunteered to put this newsletter together. Their intent is to come up with, or to be able to publish a monthly newsletter that continues to support their members in all matters of equity and their own learning journey. And then finally, the bonus tonight is just the reminder that our Northwest tribes are often featured in the news. And there is one article that's, that's shown here that was in the Washington Post at the end of, at the end of November, and I'm going to put the link in the chat to you. It focuses on the Swinomish and talks about what they're doing to address climate change in order to create and sustain the, the natural world that has been part of their heritage and their present and future. So with that, that's our honoring, honoring the land segment for this evening. And again, we look forward to learning along with you in the next months as we go deeper into the, 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 the learning about our Indigenous tribes, and not just the history, but the present day of how they are influencing our world and how we can learn to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. That was awesome. I, I'm glad to have that included as part of our, our ritual for our board meetings and to, to have that acknowledgement. That is really great. Quick question, my agenda doesn't match the agenda that you had up, Jeff, on Board Docs. That, that piece wasn't included, and I just, so check me if I'm missing anything else as we go along.
Yeah, Connie, that's my fault, because we put the, the slides in the superintendent's report, so it didn't get called out separately. And so
No worries.
sure that, that the folks that, who are watching on the webinar could see that that was on the agenda.
Yeah, no worries. I just wanted to make sure that I'm not going to overlook something. So now we get to move on to our Milltown Pride Awards.
Yeah, so tonight, we are very excited to recognize a pretty amazing group of, of our staff that have been, you know, it's, it's been quite a, a run for us with, with our nursing staff and all that they're doing. And so I'm going to read the Milltown Pride Award, and then I'm going to ask maybe Carol to speak on behalf of this crew. A saying that is often overstated is words can't express. Yet there are few words that can capture our admiration and of and appreciation for our nursing staff. Camas School District nurses are some of the fiercest advocates for student safety and wellness. Our team quickly, quickly pivoted in order to provide assistance to students in unique and unprecedented ways. Now they have added the layer of supporting nearly 1,000 employees as we navigate the ever-changing climate that this pandemic has created. This includes helping to ensure the proper distribution and use of PPE, attestation protocols, contact tracing support, and more. These notifications are coming at all hours of the day and night, including weekends. The team cheerfully and with sincere care for our staff respond to multiple emails and phone calls and provide much-needed assurances, all of this while helping students in buildings with pre-existing conditions and the usual illnesses this season brings. Thank you to this amazing team for showing up every day to provide services in our schools. We see your consistent sacrifice and want to pause and recognize you for your tremendous contributions. And Carol V., Joan, Julie, and Param are on the screen that you can see. And we also have Karen and April, who weren't, we didn't, weren't able to get the pictures of them, but we'll make sure that we deliver the awards to them. But just, this is, you know, they've really done an amazing job of just supporting our community through this process. And I just can't speak highly enough of the work that they're doing and the care that they're giving. And Carol Bruce is our lead nurse, and she has been, probably, I've talked with her more than she's wanted over the last nine months, and so I apologize for that, Carol. But if you would like to say a few words on behalf of our nursing staff, I'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely. I just know that everybody really appreciates this recognition. I just have a really great team of people that I work with. The nurses especially, but also the health assistants in the buildings. And all of these people are just, you know, working really hard, like Jeff said. And I just really appreciate all of the support that they give to, to me and to the district as a whole. And as Jeff said, COVID doesn't stop when it's evening hours or on the weekends. And these ladies just have really stepped up to the call to be available whenever they, whenever they're needed. And it's just been a real opportunity to, to meet and get to know more people in the district than we would normally interact with. So that's really kind of been one of the odd sort of benefits of this whole journey that we've been on. So thank you for taking the time to recognize the work that these ladies are all doing. They're, they're just an amazing group of people.
Carol, thank you so much for jumping on tonight, because sometimes we always feel a little sheepish about making you then get on a board meeting night to get recognized when you've been working so hard all the time anyway. But important for us to just let you know that we really do appreciate and care about you guys. And we really couldn't be doing any of our in-person services without our nursing staff right now. And so we're so fortunate that they're here. We're also really fortunate that our community supports staffing like this, because this isn't the, you know, not all districts have this, and it's only because of the board's commitment and our community's support. And so we really, really value this role and the professionals in it.
Agreed, yes. Much grateful for all of that support.
I want to say thank you. Everybody's on mute, so I just want to say thank you. Carol, to everybody on your team, thank you so much.
I was talking away on mute. Carol, also ditto, thank you to you and your team. I know you're working your fannies off even when there's not a pandemic, and so add a pandemic on. So thank you for just the enormous investment in keeping us safe and healthy. So thank you and your team.
Hang in there, Carol. There'll be a brighter day soon, right?
Awesome. Thank you. We're going to move on to our board communications. And Jeff, did you have some prompts for us today? We're going to talk about our opening plan now or during?
Yeah, I would just, we have a, an agenda item set aside for reopening plans. And we also have in my superintendent's report, an update from kindergarten and how that's going and secondary schools and academic success. So board communication, you're welcome to talk about anything, of course. But just know that those will be later in the agenda as well.
Anyone?
I jumped in one of my students' classes. They had combined some of the classes with CTE to provide some folks out in the business world and talked about soft skills in the workplace. And it was so interesting and enlightening to watch the chat box of questions that students were asking, and these were combined classes. So you had nine through 12, I believe, that were in each of these. And we had representatives from businesses, not only in Camas, but I believe it was one of Mr. Chase's college connections from ExxonMobil, who also had great insights. So I just wanted to share that. I know that Cory and I attended CAC at the beginning of the month. And trying to think, oh, I signed up for virtual classroom visits in this, in this next week and next month. And I, and I haven't gone back to look to see if we are virtually walking together. But I will go look.
Okay, I'll jump in here. So I don't know if either, maybe you guys went on the, the ESD did their legislative call, where the ESD shares our priorities with all our elected officials. I think that was one day last week, and that was really good. I enjoy going to those things. I think they've been making the rounds lately, because then I did a chamber CRDC, the same kind of thing that was just all the elected officials again being there answering questions and, and everyone sharing their priorities. So it was good to have that. Last week, I did that twice. And then I also, I jumped in with Ms. Norgard's third grade class today. And so I've jumped into my own kids' classes before, and I have an eighth grader and 11th grader. So I've kind of seen the high school way, but I haven't really seen how elementary school works. And so it was their SEL morning check-in. So it was really great. And I, I was so impressed with the kids and them learning all their Zoom skills and how to mute and unmute. And they talked about their brain and how their brain was feeling. And it was just, it was really inspiring to be there. And then I was able to ask them a few questions about just what they were doing and what they miss about school. And of course, they miss their friends, a lot is what they missed. And then you also get the third grade answer of the, the girl who wished she had more glitter for her art project that got sent home. But, you know, it was, it was, it was really great, and I loved being in there. And Ms. Norgard was very inviting, and she says, "Come back anytime and, and, and check out what they're doing." So I'm glad that we had that opportunity to visit some classrooms. I know we just started doing that. But that's been, I, I really appreciate being able to do that and see how this is all working from that side of it. So that's my update.
I'm going to, oh, sorry, Cory. Ditto, very similar to what Tracy's gone through. I know we did a capital facilities plan, and Garfield Auditorium, Garber Theater is coming along. It won't be done soon, but it is improving. It's coming on to a, I think you'll see in the capital facilities payments, it's about a million dollar payment between some of the capital investments up in the high school campus, but also the Garfield Center. It's pretty amazing, and it's, it's taking on a shape. And I think the next question is, when are we going to take another virtual tour where somebody can walk a camera through some of that facility so we can see it again? And then also, this week, sat in on four separate classrooms, jumped in and was able to attend. And incredible, I fell in love with that second grade class and how they moved through and used technology. It was a rather free-flowing moment within a window where they were just showing me things. They opened it up to show Mr. Quinn various things. And I was watching students that are about eight years old fly around and grab videos and grab fixed imagery and to jump in on audio and participate in an incredibly active manner. And then speaking of participating in an active manner, it was to, to look at the entire screen of the students and see the level of movement going on in the background constantly, constantly, was almost comical. Kids in forts, kids under blankets, kids on beds, dogs running by, food, eating breakfast, tapping. I mean, just everything you can imagine that goes on in a kid that's half at school and half at home. And it was, it was interesting to see, it, it was a bit heartbreaking that as, as engaged and active as they were, when asked, they did, they did feel, express a little bit of a disconnectiveness with their fellow students, obviously, because they're seeing them and not participating within rooms.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to add to that. Erica and I seem to be leading some parallel lives with things like the CAC meeting. And I, I always enjoy getting to, to interact with our community members there. I'm really excited to see the, the budget book presentation that we're going to be doing later on tonight. Matt Campbell and his team have done a lot of great work on that. And I think it's just that extra level of informing our community and being transparent that I think it, it gives a lot of, a lot of other districts a run for their money. It's, it's fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, hopefully, tonight will be a good representation of that. I haven't had a chance to do any of my virtual classes yet, but I have them all scheduled like on one day. So Wednesday is my day that I'm just, I'm going to be bopping between as many buildings as I can. So I'm excited to get out there and, and to see that. And then Connie and I had a policy review meeting as well. So we, you can, you can rest assured that the, the policies we'll be reading through tonight have been thoroughly vetted by President Hennessy and I.
Awesome. You, you stole my thunder on the policy review committee. I'm so excited to share that. I was able to visit, I think, the same third grade classroom that Tracy, you went to. And it was just amazing that, again, ditto what you all have said, and the, the kids being engaged and in forts and with unicorn hats on and bedhead and some laying down, some sitting at the counter, some parents like hovering just off-screen, and kids saying, "Well, my mom thinks the answer is, you know, blah, blah, blah," which was just adorable. And one of them draw a little pic, drew a little picture of my dog. I was happy to see that, like, out of 20 kids, only four had their cameras off in third grade, which I thought was great. I think when you go to the high school, it might be flipped. I know in my experience with working with high school kids, getting them to show up and, and having a camera on are two big hurdles. And I, and I had some technical problems today. I was trying to join Christina Amundsen's sixth-grade ELA. But I don't know if I had an old link or something, I wasn't able to get in. So I'll reschedule, and I have, I'm watching Kindies tomorrow, and I'm so excited to see how that's going. So trying to just jam them in every little free spot in my calendar every day. And it's just, as, as difficult as remote learning is, it still just fills my heart to see the little faces and to see learning going on and to hear third graders saying, "I can do this," and, and knowing the word perseverance. It just, it's, it's really awesome. So that was great. And thank you to all of the, the teachers who have put their, put opportunities on that document for us to come and visit their classes. I really appreciate that, because you guys are all doing a great job.
So Connie, I just want to suggest a quick shift in the agenda, because we're joined by Mayor Anne McInerney Olga from Vancouver, who's graciously on her dinner break with Vancouver City Council, I think. And I, I told you guys a little about her work in the community, just thinking about access and broadband. So if you wouldn't mind, I would love to, to share with, and let Anne go ahead and take over for a bit. Is that all right?
That's great. Thank you.
Welcome to our board meeting, Mayor.
Oh, you're on mute.
Yes, of course I am. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Superintendent Snell. Good evening, directors. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. It's, as a retired teacher, I thought I would have a little bit longer to eat. And even at city council, we have a half-hour duty free dinner, so same as when we were in the classroom. The city of Vancouver is leading an effort to expand broadband, the infrastructure and the service across Clark County. And we've been working with cities and ports and businesses and business associations and others across the county with the idea that Clark Public Utilities may be the opportunity for us. They've been involved in the conversations as we have had several different meetings to discuss how to proceed with this. But in November, the Vancouver City Council adopted a resolution that would formally request Clark Public Utilities to perform a study, a feasibility study, on how to improve broadband in the entire county. And so this fall and winter, the city and several of our partners are out into the community asking agencies to support all of this with the idea that we'll go to the PUD in January, next month, with all of our information. So this started with Greater Vancouver Chamber of Commerce, when the members were talking about legislative priorities. And we noticed that when you look at the chamber, you have members in schools, healthcare providers, businesses, nonprofits, everything, and all of them identified access to affordable, high-speed internet as one of their largest priorities. And they identified those big challenges that you know, students, workers, tenants, customers, patients, all those service providers and everyone else. So as you have been talking about, all of your students who are learning remotely, here at the city hall, we have our workers working from home. And in fact, we had a development agreement with Vancouver Clinic. And so all of those doctors are trying to deliver and work healthcare virtually. So what we're finding is that we have lots of individuals and an urgent need to improve this access, whether it's children or the elderly or the low-income or our marginalized communities. And I'm sure your students, just as the students up in Hawkinson and Battleground and even Le Center, have limited or no internet access. In fact, I have an email from a student going to Union High School in a brand-new subdivision. They're paying for satellite internet, and it's not reliable. And yet it's right on the edge of Vancouver and Camas. So there's a very strong interest, if you would, for Clark PUD as the broadband infrastructure. So there's a very strong interest, if you would, for Clark PUD as the broadband infrastructure provider. And so it is the right community. I forwarded a little document from state law. That shows up the PUD does have the power under state law to own and operate open access broadband, that infrastructure. And because they're trusted, they're an award winning partner in providing essential services, water and sewer to all of our families, our businesses and agencies. We felt that was a good place to start. So you have in front of you RCW 5416330, which is the telecommunications facilities. And we know that the Clark Public Utilities cannot be the internet service provider, the ISP. But they can help us level that playing field when it comes to access to the infrastructure piece. They can sell the wholesale access to the IEPs. Having that partnership, that public private partnership, which makes that connection, the ISPs will connect. Like if you think about the spine, the PUD would own that spine, but the ribs are the ISPs that make that last connection to that end user. So yes, it'll help our students, but it also helps us to education. Our workforce, Clark Public or Clark College has already sent their letter in. Mel Nett's hammer up at Washington State University is finishing his. Because we know that we need that economic equity throughout the county, not just in Vancouver. So that resolution is simply the opportunity to study. The feasibility of expanding this across Clark County. It's a, we need them to look at unserved. And underserved individuals. It's not binding. We're throwing money in there for that help. So that they're not out there by themselves. And we would just like to ask you for your support in the resolution. And to see if the commissioners would be interested in performing a feasibility study. We have examples throughout the state of Washington, up in counties, P, other PUDs, cities. And so we would be a part of that discussion with them. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Director McHenry, I think you've lost a few letters in your name there.
You'd be surprised how many times I hear that, actually.
Any questions? Not at this point. Mayor McInerney, oh, well, thank you so much for being with us. I, I think we talked in our, by one. It's briefly about them discuss whether, um, to move forward as a board to officially join the, the movement.
Okay. Thank you. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Have a good evening. Thank you so very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Take care.
That was great. Okay. So. We're done with the board communications and moving on to public comments. And it looks like. We, did we have four or five public comments? It was in our email.
We have four public comments, Connie, and I'll go ahead and read through them. Also Connie, you're, um, you're breaking up a little on your audio sometimes. And I'm not sure if that's, it's just me hearing that, but, we just might need to monitor that as we go forward to make sure. Um, so I'll just read the comments. They're all, they're all within the three minute. I think I can make it work. So, um, and then you have access to them. They are linked in board docs. So if people want to go back and see. The whole statement or if I missed anything. So, uh, the first one says, good evening, school board members. I have two topics to bring to your attention. First topic is our community needing better access to our school board meetings. After listening to the recording of the November 23rd school board meeting, I appreciated the board members agreeing about the importance of everyone's voice in our community. This is an important year in which many people are finding their voices and wanting to know how to better use it for important change. I'd like to see the school board information, including the Zoom meeting links, email contacts, agendas, meeting minutes, uh, meeting recordings better accessible on the district's website. It can be hard to find and I would recommend, uh, links being highlighted somehow on the site's front page instead of going through the multiple tabs to find. I feel that if our community had better access to ask questions and hear directly from the school board, there would be a better understanding felt community wide. Several board members also suggested setting up listening posts again. I think that would be great. Second topic is regarding the agenda item tonight to approve payment to Diamond Ranch Academy in Utah. I had no idea that our district pays for and sends students, uh, children to this place. I hope that our school board understands and researches this institution before approving payment. This academy has been accused of various acts against children and I would hope that Camas School District would not support two of our students being placed there. I think the taxpayers deserve, deserve an explanation for the 165 to $285,000 cost. As well as why CSD has approved sending two children to another state for services at a potentially questionable facility as well. Thank you, Brandy Heard. The next one. I believe that it's time for the parents and kids in Washington to have a choice of going to in-person school. The nation is back to school. I see my friends' kids going to school five days a week, playing sports like football, volleyball, starting school plays, even wrestling. They have far worse numbers than we do in Camas, yet our kids are still being forced to learn at home. Personally, my family is doing okay, not great, but okay. Others are not. My fight is for them. I talk to high school seniors every day that are struggling. I talk to friends that have had to quit their jobs because they have had to stay home to help their small kids do Zoom skill schooling. My son has a friend that is 14 and just dropped out of her freshman year because she got so far behind, so just decided not to bother anymore. To date, my freshman son has turned in hundreds of assignments. It's nonstop. I took pictures of a 13 year old girl in January and she has now gone due to suicide. One of my kids came upstairs a month ago telling me, Mom, I need you to call this friend mom's, friend's mom right away. They just had a feeling like something wasn't right with a friend. I kept calling, texting. I got ahold of the mom to tell her my kiddo wants you to check on your kiddo. That they feel the things aren't, um, like things aren't good. I got a text back an hour later from that mom thanking me and told me that she saved her kid, that this saved her kiddo's life. Times are hard and it is not fair to our children. They need people, they need structure, they need activities. I want to fight for the kids that don't have a good home environment. It is time we had a choice. This is ridiculous. The rest of the nation has figured this out. We can't even figure out a hybrid plan. Jennifer Barnes. The next one, national health leaders, Dr. Anthony Fossey, CDC Director Robert Redfield. Have shown support for schools to be in person. Even Governor Inslee has said the recent lockdowns do not need to affect schools reopening. And Washington State Superintendent Chris Reichtall has recently said distance learning is not working for many students, including his own, and that students are not engaging. We see children all over the country and the world attending school in person, and the students in our region will be at a major disadvantage academically, mentally, physically and socially if we do not follow suit. If you want to follow science, follow the science that children are not super spreaders of COVID-19. And that the survival rate is overall is over 99%. Kids know how to wear masks and they can socially distance. Give them a chance to prove they can rise to this challenge. Thank you, Jessica Mitchell. And the final one, letter for consideration. It's early, already December. The vast majority of students in our district have not stepped foot in their schools for nine months. Last year's kindergartners left their new classrooms not knowing it was the last time they would be there. If our district says stays with the current DOH recommendations, they will not return at least until they start second grade. I believe that is unacceptable. Remote learning has not been sufficient for the learning they need. It is especially unacceptable when data and research says that they can have a relatively safe return. But in Washington State, here in our little town of Camas, most of these kindergartners are still at home trying to learn to read and write through a computer screen. You, the school board have made a decision to stay closed, even as that decision is a byproduct of waiting for Department of Health Guidance to make the decision for you. You have made a decision receiving much data on safety and having seen damning SEL survey results. It has been recommended by every higher health department in the country and arguably the world, CDC, WHO, UNICEF, AAP, Dr. Fossey, et cetera. That the truth is for kids K-12, one of the safest places they can be from our perspective is to remain in school, says CDC Director Dr. Robert Redfield. Whether or not the responsibility you carry of a decision for all in the district is fair or wanted, here we are. Any decision has risk. No action or inaction is risk free. Returning to school will never be risk free. It never has been. As we worry of the what could be's of returning, we are now experiencing the damaging actualities of staying home. You have to decide. Last week, the state superintendent Chris Reichtall said sadly governance in the state is broken. I can only recommend to the governor and the DOH and a local school district. So I'm doing that. I'm giving very clear guidance along with the DOH on how to keep kids and educators safe once they're in the building. It is some of the best framework, I think, in the country. All I get is a recommendation. I need folks to listen to the whole story about child development and mental health and connectivity and isolation. When they take it on balance, I believe they'll keep lifting these things and giving our young people a lot more opportunity. He continues, I want grades open, particularly early grades, and we're pushing hard for that. I think early grades are very safe to bring back on balance. Online learning is not successful for a lot of kids. It requires them to be very independent learners. So the opportunity is only really viable for older kids and some are thriving, some enjoy it, most are not. I do not try to downplay or the virus or minimize the fear that teachers might feel of a real, very real virus that to a few can be very dangerous. I would demand safety measures in place. I would demand masks to be worn and social distancing practice. We should do all we can to protect the health and safety of all those in the schools. Unfortunately, we know how. However, we also need to protect the health and safety of our rising generation of students. What they are facing, the effects of being locked down is dangerous too. It is life threatening. It has long lasting consequences. We can help and protect both. We have to do both. Understandably, as we go into the holiday break, many families are concerned about the rest of the school year. I'm watching families desperately try to support their kids in learning. I'm seeing teachers in tears of frustration and burnout. I'm watching once in a lifetime experiences pass our youth by. I'm hearing story after story of absolutely dangerous levels of depression and self harm in the kids that live here in Camas. Camas, here are little town, our students. That's who you are charged in deciding for, our little town of Camas. Please don't continue to wait for a broken system to know what's right for our town. Please consider Camas students, their families and our schools. We have the PPE space and support. To echo the Vancouver School Superintendent, we are running out of time. Thank you, Sarah Christensen. And those are the public comment for this evening. Connie, you're muted.
Of course I am. Sorry. Um, have you all looked at the consent agenda? Thank you for those public comments. I reiterated while I was mute. Um, and then, uh, moving on to our consent agenda. Did everybody have an opportunity?
Yeah, I did have the opportunity and, uh, I, I, I saw the reference in the, uh, public comment to the Diamond Ranch. I'm seeing the name. It's halfway hidden behind my monitor display here.
Academy.
Yes. Um, I have not heard that concern voiced before, and I would ask staff. About our future options, uh, regarding it. Uh, I'm comfortable moving forward. I know we've had students there now for at least, well, but the 15 years that I've been doing this. So I do know that, uh, and I, and I know parents participate in that process of placement, uh, historically. So I guess I'm, uh, I, I would like to have a better understanding of what, what it was going on or what that citation would refer to. But I am at the same time comfortable with moving forward with the contract tonight, knowing that it's, uh, we have student care, uh, as a paramount responsibility at this point. We have to treat them. I'm getting, that's pretty high. That's a pretty intensive level of treatment, uh, care that they go through. So I will move for approval, uh, after this.
And I will second that and just throw another comment on there about, um, the safety net funding. Cause I know there was a question about the cost for those programs, but we do, um, we are eligible for some safety net funding in some of those cases, um, to cover the cost of that. So, um, that's my second.
It's been moved and seconded. All these is in favor. Give me a thumbs up. It's unanimously approved. Thank you all. This moves us to our superintendent report. Dr. Snell.
Thank you, Connie. Um, so I, I was just start with around town and, um, the first thing, there's an image here of our student advisory council focus group. And so you guys have charged me with continuing to figure out ways to engage student voice differently. And so we had a group of middle school students, and this is a picture of high school students that joined us to talk about the idea of student advisory council. To mirror the process of our citizens advisory council. And so, uh, Dr. Williams and I got some great ideas from these, these students. And we're excited to present, um, to you in January, a proposal, um, to, uh, approve, uh, a process called the student advisory council. That will mirror and, uh, follow along the citizens advisory council moving forward. So, um, we also are featuring that in the, uh, reports to the community. So there'll be a short article about that. Um, stuff the bus. There's, uh, that, that's still been going on. It looks a lot different than it has in years past. But a lot of great effort from students and staff, um, in trying to coordinate this. And I included an image, um, below. Uh, we're trying to find ways to engage small groups of students and one of those has been drum line practice. Um, and so there are some standards around music and vocal performance and drums. You know, you're not blowing into an instrument. You can be masked. And so, um, six feet apart and practice all the, the, all the, um, mitigation strategies. But they were able to actually come to some of our elementary schools and perform for kindergarten students. As part of the stuff bus campaign in years past, that's always been a huge highlight of our, our musical programs accompanying the stuff the bus. And, um, boy, it was a treat, not just for the kindergartners, but, um, for the students that got to perform. And so I did include a link here of a short video of them playing their drums too. So we can look at that. Um, you can look at that at your leisure. Um, I also had an opportunity to attend the Camas Citizens for Quality Schools launch. Um, they invited me to their kickoff. This is an organization that, um, that, uh, has supported the Camas School District through levies and bonds over the past 20 plus years. Since they've organized, um, great group of people that, um, really, uh, wanna see, you know, our levies and bonds passed and pass. So, um, I appreciate their leadership and as a district staff, our job is to inform the public about the, the ballot issue. We don't campaign yes or no to that. And so these other groups are the ones that do campaigning and our job is just to support them with information. So, um, that kickoff was last week, I think. Um, I want to share a couple of things just shortly in the slides ahead. Senior Symposium Legislative Forum and the Board Workshop. So the first thing is typically this time of the year, we have, um, seniors coming in to present their symposium research. And it's always a highlight of the year. They, they set up in the cafeteria here at the Zellerback Center. Um, and we go and walk around and talk to them for a half hour or so before the board meeting. And then typically in a board meeting, um, uh, two or three will present to us. And so, um, tonight, uh, I, I have three on here that as a board I'm highlighting for you. Um, I sent all the presentations to you and so you're welcome to watch every single one of them. They're all about four to six minutes long. They're all very impressive. On this page, I've highlighted three different areas. Um, Mr. Green and Ms. Abraham, um, helped me. This is a medical focus is the first one from Amy, who did her internship at OHSU. And then Alex is a, an environmental focus. And then Kate, um, did more of, they called it just kind of a miscellaneous because she really looked at. Equity training across different organizations and the impact of that training. And so just amazing research from these kids. I'd really encourage you to click on them and, um, learn more about it. Uh, I miss seeing them in the symposium, um, this year. So. But they're still doing the work and they're being really creative about how to do it, um, because the internships look pretty different this summer. The next area, oops, it's going to make me go through each one.
Hi, everyone. My name.
Hello. Um, so the next area is, uh, the legislative forum that you guys, um, I can't, Tracy talked about the, the regional legislative forum. So that occurred a week ago Friday, I think. Um, and so you guys have helped us, um, develop some, uh, platform and priorities that we can. Share with our elected officials as they head to kind of a, a different kind of legislative session this year. And so related to immediate school needs, we have two areas of just continuing to stabilize, uh, funding. You know, the impacts of COVID have been pretty significant, um, from an enrollment standpoint, and then from an additional cost standpoint. We are finding some savings, um, but not enough to comp, uh, to balance out the costs. Also to just think about access, as you heard, um, broadband is an issue and there are other barriers that are happening. And, and the differences are, um, really exacerbated through these times, types of situations where those who have support are, are, tend to do a little better than those who don't. And, and when you're in a remote setting, it, it makes it even more challenging. So really thinking about professional development, how do we continue? To have resources like technology and curriculum, um, and training. So. And then in the long term is really, um, before this pandemic hit, these have been things that we've talked about, um, over the years. Fully fund special education. Fully fund special education, remove reductions and regionalization. Remember that each year from now on, our revenue is cut by 1% by the state as part of the regionalization plan. And then thinking about that prototypical school funding model and we complimented our nurses this evening. And that's just a great example of having to use local funding to support staffing that really is essential. Like we could not do this work without our nursing staffing. So really wanting the state to look at the prototypical model and recognize kind of what staff are needed to run schools today. And then finally, we're very fortunate in Camas around the facilities we have because of community support through the years with bonds and our ability to care for those resources. Not all districts are so lucky. And so we have joined on with other districts and continue to advocate for facilities investment at the state level across public schools. And you know, I think we have a great example, just looking south of the river to Portland and some of the struggles they've had around facilities. And without that ongoing investment at the state level, it really starts to create some inequity. So that's our legislative priority platform right now. And then before this meeting, we had a workshop to look at strategic planning. And so our strategic plan was for 2020 and here we are almost at the end of 2020. So we're looking at a refresh. We highlighted some areas of foundation for our mission related to relationships, learning, equity and support. But also if it's a district, you have adopted a stance that that we're going to hold diversity, equity and inclusion at the center of the work that we do. And so as we review our goals and as we plan for the future, really looking at it of through the lens of each student that we serve and how can we do that best? So I'm gonna, you heard, which member was it? Corey talking about the budget book tonight. So at the Citizens Advisory Committee, we shared where we're at with this. We've also shared with the Budget Committee and gotten feedback. And we're really excited to launch an online budget portal. And the goals of this are really to increase access. And so it was born because when we started our Budget Committee several years ago, the Budget Committee would ask these great questions. And each time they'd ask the question, we would do the research and come back to the committee the next time with the answer. And then they'd ask another great question. And so we were always kind of in this cycle. And so we started to take all those questions that they've asked and say, how can we make that interactive so that anybody can access that information anytime, anyplace? And so from that became the budget book. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and I'm going to stop sharing my slides. And I believe Matt, you can share slides.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen here, pardon me. There we go. So thanks for the time. I appreciate it. You can see the budget book here slash screen. So my name is Matt Campbell and I thank you to the board for your time. I know most of you have seen some of this before. About two months ago at the board meeting, I presented a sort of first draft conceptual overview where we're going. So not to restate what Jeff said, but in the interest of transparency, what he had asked me to do was create this product. And we settled that something dynamic, something that was updatable on a routine basis. Because what we found were most of the products that when we researched existing school district products, most of them were fairly static. So you get a good picture at the beginning of the year based on budget. But in the case of, for instance, this year, it would be completely outdated as you went forward into the COVID year. So let me jump right into it and then explain by way of demonstration. What you're seeing on your screen is our current homepage or district homepage. And you can see these various headers reopening, learning, et cetera. Clicking over to the budget website, you'll see a similar one and this budget link will be added to that line item. And now that the budget link is not live yet. It's password protected, but when we go live, when we're directed, then this will be active and available to the entire public. And so I just want to, without going too in depth, I want to demonstrate a little bit of the concept here. So the budget book we call, I think maybe a bit of a misnomer, we're seeking a good description. It's really twofold. It's a text based description of the budget processes which underlie public school funding in Washington. And that is meant to be focused at the general public. So someone can jump on here and say, how does, how does the state fund us, for instance? And you can dig into general fund revenues, for instance, or how to, where our expenditures go, you can jump in there. So in the overview, pardon me, in the menu, you can see on the left hand side here, there's more general information, executive overview, things that COVID addendum, budget facts, et cetera. And as you proceed through the report, it gets more and more detailed, all the way to the point where you, as the member of the public, can pull every bit of financial data and review it. The same access that I have, including every transaction that we've done for the last, I believe I've got six years of data in here. So if you click on executive summary, for instance, you'd see a text description at the highest level, the standard executive overview. And it goes through it. And this, of course, will be updated every year. Going back to the menu to keep this fairly brief, because there's a lot of data in here. You can see all the other pages. For instance, we have a levy upcoming. So if you click on the local levies, you would see a levy page which mirrors our public communication flyer that's gone out recently or will go out. And just explains what is a levy versus bond, what types of levies do we have? What is the rates that we're proposing and the historical perspective on it? How does it affect individual homeowners? What's the timing of the election, et cetera? It's a tendency when I do this presentation to get bogged down in the data. In the interest of time, I'll keep moving and get questions at the end and I'm happy to go into whatever you'd like. I also want to show, I want to kind of turn here is what I've shown you so far is sort of a process overview and a data overview. But what we're seeking is really context for the data. So what we want to do as we go forward, this is really phase one. This is me gathering the data and getting it into in the nuts and bolts behind the scene, getting it into formats which allow me to combine the data and publicly present it. But we're looking for context. So for instance, we want to know, I'll give you a quick example. How do we compare with other districts? How do we know how well we're doing? So you can see, for instance, on here, there might be the text may be a bit small. So where do we stand relative to, this happens to be same sized districts? How do we stand relative to other same sized districts in the state in regard to, for instance, teaching activities and our expenditures as a percentage of the budget? Where do we stand on administration costs? How efficient are we being? Total administration costs, et cetera. So that's all there and it's available. The last thing that I want to show you is I mentioned that as you go through, you'll eventually get to where the member of the public, and some will want to do this, will want to view the actual financial data. And this, what I just clicked on is public facing as it loads. We're continuing to gather data. And as we gather it, we're continuing to move, like I said, into what we call phase two, we just started to combine the data. So it's one thing to know how much we spend on a given activity or a given program. But it's better to know how much we spend per student or per school or per square foot, if we're talking, depending on what we're talking about. So we're, all this data is continually being updated. So I'll give you an example. Let me see here. There's all kinds of tabs full of data here. I'm trying to get to one that might, for instance, if you want to know where our expenditures go. You could select which fiscal year you wanted, you could select what location you want or just view it as in the whole. And you want to click on a various category and data mine it out to see exactly where our money goes. I think that's about the level of detail. We could probably anchor on this all night. Depending on what screen you look at, you can view it in all kinds of different, different ways. But I think we've kind of proven the concept of what we're going for here. So going forward, at some point when Dr. Snell says, go for it, we will, we will open this to the public with the understanding that it is, it's continuously updated. It's a living document, which is really a paradigm shift for us and moving away from a static product or PDF to something that I'm updating on a monthly, sometimes a daily basis. So if I got everything, Dr. Snell, then I am finished and I stand by for questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, just happy to answer questions from the board.
Matt, have you pre-built any sorts of reports that would be commonly researched by either the administrative team or parents or board members? Have you started that process?
Yes, we have a separate product that really feeds into the, to the monthly budget reports that I use for standardized pre-built reports. And my goal is to continue to build the data such that they kind of merge, that I've got those products. I can pull them from that standalone system called Forecast Five, or I can build them in here. But your question raises a good point, which is we're used to looking historically and looking at the data and say, okay, what do we spend at Camas High School on X program? Which is great, but as we go forward, when I get those questions, repetitive questions, it's very useful to then build the reports, not based on what happened, but what do we want to measure to achieve our objectives? And that's really the goal. So the short answer is yes. And the longer interest there, get better as we get more questions.
Matt, I think this is great. I can't wait for it to go live and I can see myself and everyone else just like digging into the, you can look at this stuff for hours and find out all kinds of information and to have it there easily ready for everyone to look at, I think is, it's going to be huge benefit to our community. So thanks for all the hard work on this and I think it looks great.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt, I mean, when we talked about this, the CAC meeting last week, it was, it was fantastic. How much time again have you, have you been spending on this? It's been, it's been a pretty long endeavor, hasn't it?
Well, it has. And you know, a lot of this is learning public school planning over the last ten months and then learning sort of, not to dig too far into it, but the nuts and bolts of how to step one, how to physically do this in terms of what IT systems, where to get the data and then learning how to, how to, how to combine it so that the system knows what data is associated with the other one. But I could go on for hours about that. But sure version is quite a bit of, every day, all day in some form. The value added for me is that I can pull data very quickly to answer questions now. And so it makes my job easier.
And are there, I mean, you alluded to the fact that this is, this is in many ways real time. Does it, does it kind of update itself? Or is this something that you or other team members have to go in and update?
No, I established data sources and I validate them before this whole process to get, to make sure I know what I'm pulling into it. So that it interacts in the right way with the other data. But I update, for instance, once a month after we audit the data and reconcile the date of the month, I pull all the transactions, which is maybe 10,000 transactions a month into the system and data check them, that kind of thing. Same with enrollment. Same with staffing, that type of thing. So it's a monthly schedule for me. And that's probably the best answer is that it's monthly. I don't like to update it too quickly because then you end up chasing it continually. So getting on a schedule is the better way to go.
Yeah, well, the level of transparency, I mean, I don't think I've seen this in any other district before. I just it's another, another thing to be proud of here. So nice job on it.
Kudos, Jason. I know that we talked about this. I think it's been almost a couple of years, maybe eighteen months ago, we, we started. You talked this up and I remember getting pretty excited that this was going to be a good tool for the community. Thank you. And Matt, your role as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Matt's just been awesome. What an awesome addition to our great team and we're just, we're proud to have him. And this is case in point right here. So, thank you.
So just related to timeline, you know, as Matt said, you guys saw this a month or two ago. Our Budget Committee sought it, embedded it. Our Citizens Advisory Committee did an activity where they looked at it and provided feedback. So we feel like we've spent the last three, four months, one, trying to make sure everything's as accurate and available as possible. And then trying to make it as user friendly as possible, but knowing that as soon as we put it out, there's going to be feedback. And that's the beauty of having it constantly evolving. And so but our hope is that unless we're hearing any slow it down from you guys tonight, that we would push this out in the CSD Newsroom Report that updates the community on the board meeting tonight. Awesome. All right. I'm going to jump back into the superintendent's report. Did that slide over from Matt's screen to, okay, good. So this next part of the superintendent's report is what I've reported every board meeting, I guess, back since March. And so I want to give you guys an update on where we're at and just remind folks. You know, these are the guiding principles that we put forth when trying to navigate this pandemic. And our current status continues. I think this screenshot was from Friday. So this is last week's data. That we're having more cases in the community and as a result, we're having more cases in our schools. That being said, to date, we have one suspected transmission at school. So we haven't seen the outbreaks at the school level, even though our numbers have gone up significantly over the last month in terms of students affected and family, staff committed affected. And you know, I don't want to, each, each one of these is a person and you know, we wish them the best and dealing with this, fortunately, the situation, the cases that we're aware of that have impacted our staff and students haven't been significant to the point, you know, of hospitalization, those kinds of things, but it's serious and we want to pay attention to it and we want to continue to have this data available for the community. And so if you're just seeing this dashboard for the first time, people on the call, this is on our website. You can click and see any school, anything. Any reported quarantine positive case staff or student. And we update those real time. So as soon as they're confirmed, each day, at the end of the day, we will update that. Now, sometimes we don't get confirmation right away from the Department of Health or from the provider to confirm whether it was a case or not. So this is where we're at now. As you guys know, we've been incrementally building on the success of the summer by adding the number of small groups of students. And so with November, we were about fourteen hundred students that are served through a small group. Our only grade level cohort in a small group is kindergarten. The other activities you can see here are cross grade levels, but not a whole grade level like kindergarten. In our November board meeting, you guys asked, we presented some ideas about either expanding or pausing. And the recommendation was to pause just based on our timing with the winter break coming and Thanksgiving break and the rates kind of growing exponentially at the time. And so that's where we're at right now. I'm going to turn it over to Doug Hood to give you guys an update on kindergarten. We've been briefing you on the plans leading up to it. And now we're, I think we're in our sixth week, fifth or sixth week now. So Doug, are you on the call?
You bet. All right. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. So actually, we just completed our fifth week. And so this is our sixth week this week. And so this was a picture, as you can see, taken outside of Helen Baller Elementary School on November ninth, which was the very first day of our kindergarten small groups within our district. So this was a great shot. You can see parents and kids and in our social distancing, obviously in mass and it was a great shot and we wanted to put that in there. Jeff, if you want to get to the next slide. Thank you. So currently, like I had said, we started on November ninth and just completed our fifth week. And we've been in conversations, but I also wanted to make sure everyone on this call knew, especially the board, that currently we have about seventy seven percent of our kindergarten students and their families chose onsite. So that's about three hundred and twenty-two students. And then ninety-six students were around twenty-three percent chose the fully remote option for our, for our learning at this time. The staff, so that was kindergarten teachers. In this case, paraprofessionals who are helping support and then principals were given a thought exchange or given the opportunity for a thought exchange last week. And it, and out of the participants, you can see thirty-five participated. There were forty-nine thoughts. And so what I tried to do for you tonight was really put those into a theme of the top ten rated thoughts. And the question or the prompt you can see is in the slide. It was basically around our kindergarten small groups. What are some bright spots, highlights, but what are also some concerns or opportunities for growth? What do we need to be paying attention to? Out of our top ten rated thoughts, paraprofessional support was overwhelmingly the biggest rated. And for your understanding on this, every kindergarten teacher to get the small And for your understanding on this, every kindergarten teacher to get the small groups going and and our paraprofessionals are still in place. Each teacher has a paraprofessional working with them for supervision reasons, for safety reasons, helping our young ones get started with this, and it's just been awesome. And staff was overwhelmingly saying, hey, this is a reason why we are successful. This is a great thing that that we have. Teachers and and others that responded to this thought exchange also talked about being able to assess onsite, right, in person and being able to really understand our students academically and social and socially and emotionally while they're here onsite. And then you you can't replace the connection, right, that the student is onsite with their teacher, mask and all, that there's this connection between teachers. And then really importantly, is also student to student, right? And so that was something that that came through with the top 10 thoughts as well. And then relationships obviously are being enhanced because students are being able to are are interacting with each other, interacting with the teacher. And of course, socially distanced while doing this, but that there's that interaction and the relationships are being built. Workload, it's something that we've talked about since March. Just the amount that teachers are having to do right now, whether they're onsite or teaching fully remote. The workload is is definitely there. And then just the positive energy of being able to see the students and the joy in the parents. And then the remote only teacher. So some schools have a fully remote teacher that's supporting the kindergarten students that chose to to be in a fully remote learning opportunity at this time. And then this was a thought exchange that our parents and guardians did last week. It closed last week as well. And so very, very great participation. We had 167 participants and around 209 thoughts. Same prompt. What are some bright spots, highlights? What are some concerns or opportunities for our growth? These are the top six themes that came through out of the top 10 rated, and we'll have a slide next that kind of breaks that down a little bit more, too. Parents and guardians were super positive around the staff, the school appreciation for onsite and remote learning and what teaching staff, parent support, principals are doing. Nurses, as Jeff talked about earlier in the award. School system adapting to the many challenges. You know, there's always something coming up that maybe we had not looked at, but just the ability for a school system to adapt really rose to the top with our parents and our guardians. And then managing the in-person and remote learning opportunities. And that comes down to the workload piece that I talked about before. That's not easy to do, and our staff has just done a phenomenal job being able to balance those two two things. And then when our students are onsite from 8 to 11:45, whichever cohort they are in, is just maximizing that onsite time. And then our students are happy and they feel safe. And so that was something that rose to the top with our parents and our guardians as well. So this is the the themed responses, and you can see on the left-hand side, so the very tall, the tallest purple bar is really staff appreciation. So that was the highest rated thought was around staff appreciation. Learning time is the next, then implementation, student and family feedback, you can see increased time, safety, communication and remote learning. And I don't know, Jeff, if we have time, if if they want to explore a little bit within these this graph, this particular graph, but it's just quite interesting to see some of the thoughts and and what came up and what was scored. So I'll I'll ask the board, you you tell us where you want to drive on this.
Doug, thank you. I'd love to see what what's going on with that learning time. Is that are related to how much?
Sure. So it's got the key word learning in it, right? And so you can see that the top rated thought in that learning time was that your child loves in-person learning. But then you'll also see you want to stop right there for a sec, Jeff. On the on the 4.0, you can see being able to see other kids per age. And so it it puts it into these categories for us. You know, again, the being able to see other kids and interact, you can see that that's that's something that that plays through through this.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, can I can I highlight this one? And again, that first comment, and I think this is, this speaks volumes to our staff and what they have been able to do at the kindergarten level. And I'm talking teachers, I'm talking paraprofessionals, I'm talking nurses. I'm talking principals, custodians. This thought, you know, and again, this is something that I think is very real, and it's and I'm going to read it because I think it's so important. It says, you know, my my child has loved her in-person time. I was worried the combination of mass and distancing wouldn't allow kids to be themselves. So far, in-person has been very positive. And so, you know, again, as we're navigating all of this, you know, will kids wear masks? Will, you know, how's that going to work out? I can tell you right now, our our kids are awesome. They are absolutely understanding what it's going to take for us to be in school. And so that's that's a real positive. Sorry, Erica, I cut you off. What was?
No, that was it. I wanted to I wanted to hear safety. So thank you.
Okay, the other one, too, Jeff, if you see that one, that's 4.2. Scroll up just a tad right there. We were hesitant to do in-person school initially, but the school has done a fantastic job thinking through and planning for all the guidelines. Everything has been done smoothly and it feels safe. And again, this this was not accidental, nor did it happen by chance. Again, our our classroom teachers, our principals, our pairs, everybody has been working so hard to make sure that things are in place so that we can't have students onsite. And that rose to the to the top of of the safety that folks are feeling comfortable with their kids onsite, and that that's a testimony to our staff at our buildings.
Hey, Doug, earlier you had mentioned, I can't remember what the number was, if it was like 77% of kindergartners have been are are in-person as compared to the ones who are remote. Has that number been steady or has it have have people been deciding they want to keep they want to have people been adding to that number, or have they been pulling back at all, or is it?
Sure. Great, great question. We've had a couple of families, yes, that have worked with their principals and teaching staff and said, hey, right now, here's what we're going to really need for our family that started potentially onsite and said we want to wait and 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 we're going to go back to remote and go see what what the numbers look like after winter break. We we have had a couple of families, but not to the extent where even with our county numbers, the way they have gone. We've we've stayed very steady with our numbers in our buildings as far as kindergarten.
So if a family is fully remote of your 96 students, families there, can they come back at any time or what what's the timeline if they decide all of a sudden they want to have in-person?
Yeah, great question. We we talked as a committee, I have a I am part of a kindergarten committee with kindergarten teachers from each school, representing each school, and then a principal, and then Diane Loffrey is on that as well. And we really talked about having some consistency, not only for the teacher, but for our kids as well. And so we landed on winter break. We originally landed on the trimester and it and it ran into winter break. And so you know, there is an opportunity to come back. There are natural times to come back versus just a random day that we want it to be a smooth transition. But you know, there's always that opportunity to 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 serve students onsite if a family wants to come onsite. We have not had that as much right now because I think people are waiting for winter break. It's more of a natural transition to have potentially coming from fully remote to onsite after winter break.
Any other questions for Doug before we transition to a secondary update?
I have just one quick question. So you said there were 96 students who are fully remote. Are those are the CCA Academy kids included in that number?
No, we no, these are, these are all students that are either being served by a kindergarten teacher from so, for example, at Grass Valley, they had enough students who said, hey, we want to be fully remote right now that it took one whole teacher out of the equation onsite. So now they're doing the fully remote. It didn't land that way at every building. And again, testimony to the staff and the building principals to to really work with their families to figure out what those services would look like.
Doug, thanks for the update and thanks to our kindergarten staff. You know, some of them were on the call I saw when I looked at the beginning. So we really, really appreciate your work and really grateful, too, for the families to trust that, you know, taking that leap of faith and getting in and now that we're five weeks in seeing that data that it made a difference, right? And so that's a real positive to celebrate. The next part, I got to get advanced here a little bit to get is I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Williams. And Dr. Williams, do you want me to keep just driving the slides, or do you want me to stop sharing?
You can keep driving.
All right.
Okay, so this first slide is just exactly what it says, a quick recap. We were sharing with you F data. We focused on Canvas High School. There were a lot of questions and concerns from community members and students and such, and so we highlighted them in our first update. And we talked about attendance and the various challenges and opportunities that COVID was presenting with collecting attendance data as well as how we are using Panorama and other forums to collect SCL data. Next slide. And then last time, I believe, we talked about the change in attendance over the last from last year to this year, what that dip looks like now that it's lower. One school in particular, we'll see on the slide coming, we noticed that there was a 16-point dip, and we dug we dug a little further and found out something pretty interesting to share with you tonight. And again, our questions remained around academics and SCL. How can we can continue to support students with the academic and SCL concerns that we have? Next slide. And so that brings us to tonight. We're going to look again at F data, and I believe Jeff told us that you wanted Ds and F data, so we have information for you about that. At the high school level, we are noticing some decreases in our numbers of Fs, and there's a couple of different reasons for that. Teachers continue to work with students in order to find ways to support them so that they can meet standard. They are also becoming more and more flexible with some of their grading practices to ensure that they are prioritizing the important standards that students need in order to transition into courses. At a campus like Hays, they don't issue Ds and Fs, they issue incompletes, or or students don't necessarily earn credit because they their semester is complete in nine weeks. And so we have a range of grading options on our campus that allow for some flexibility in terms of supporting students. And speaking of attendance, with that attendance data, we noticed that some schools were a little bit more strict in terms of how to count attendance than others. And so when we met to calibrate and talk about how teachers are taking attendance, we found that our actual just from attendance taking and monitoring some of our attendance stats improved. And again, teachers and staff are doing lots of things to support students to, you know, like we mentioned last time, the community connection days. One of our schools sent cards for students prior to breaks, and they send cards to them on their birthdays. Staff continue to make videos and just do all kinds of things to go out of their way to try to connect personally with students in this time. Okay, next slide. So what we're trying to do is, how do we keep our eye towards equity and ensure that we are monitoring student performance over time? And so what we've done for our secondary report is to mirror what will eventually become a template for, I believe, our five-year strategic plan. There are certain key milestones that we will be monitoring. Like in the the second yellow there, as a district, the percent of ninth graders with six credits, because we know that's a key milestone in order to ensure students are on track for graduation. We have that 95% graduation rate that Jeff mentioned earlier. We want to make sure that we're monitoring very closely now who's on track. And this this line in particular is really talking about the class of 2021. And we'll have some more information for you about that class in January. But I just thought it was important to pause and just kind of look at the beautiful makeup we have of students, especially at the secondary level. 20 over 2,400 students, and you see the racial background and the different services we are able to provide our students. You see the at the entire high school system, all three high schools, the numbers of Fs or in no credits, the numbers of Bs and incompletes, and then the overlapping number of Fs, incompletes and such. And so that's like if a student has one D, they made it onto this list. So they may not be like flying high on that radar in terms of students to watch out for except for teachers working with students falling behind. But just trying to account for every possible student and where they fall. And again, trying to look at each of these groups through an equity lens to see if each of our groups are being served and supported in the ways they need to be. Next slide, please. And so there are two of our illustrious school leaders on the line today. And they have provided us with some information around how we're going to be grading at the middle school level. So this slide actually just kind of captures an overall total of academic outcomes for sixth graders as well as a proficiency rate for all middle schoolers using this new grading system. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I believe, Gary's going first to try to shed some light on what it means now for grading at especially Liberty and Sky Ridge.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me. We were asked to put together some data about our first trimester Ds and Fs. And we're not giving Ds and Fs anymore. So we had to find a new way of communicating how students are doing. The challenge on that is is we our systems need to have time to catch up to our forward practice. So real quick, you know, a typical student at the middle school is going to be assessed on somewhere in the neighborhood of about 55 standards. These are prioritized standards that the staff has worked on. And and these are the areas where we're really going to be focusing. Are we doing our jobs? Are the kids learning these key concepts? And so throughout the first trimester, and we just completed our grading on Friday. And so this data is very fresh. What we did is, again, depending on what classes a student has, which electives they have. A student was assessed somewhere in the neighborhood of between 20 and 23 standards. And yeah, I'm not sure what the next slide is, but can we take a look at the next slide? So in general, and again, different grade levels have slightly different number of standards, and you can see a typical student is going to have this number of academic standards they're being assessed on in their classes. And so thinking about like health fit, for example, there's 11 different things we're assessing a kid on. Instead of boiling all that down to one letter grade or one number, we're looking at each of those important topics separately. So it's no longer able, we're no longer able to just look at a single indicator and tell you whether or not a student is passing or failing. We look at each one individually. So can I take a look at the next slide? So looking at a typical student, I crunched the data, and this is this is an actual student. So what we have here, just to orient you, this is an eighth grade student, and you can see there are four different scores that students can receive. Insufficient evidence is reserved. Insufficient evidence is reserved for kids who really haven't, haven't shown us much, if any, work. And so it's difficult for us to know what they know. So it's not necessarily that they're doing very poorly. We just don't know how they're doing because they haven't either taken an assessment or they haven't been attending classes. If you're below standard, that, that means that we have seen data from you. We have, we have seen work and it hasn't risen to the, the level of, a basic level of standard or the student is required to help in order to achieve progressing or meeting. Progressing is especially at this time of the year, right where a student should be. These are kids who are meeting the basic levels of standard and are showing that they're on track for learning the year-end standard. And then of course, meeting standard, those are students who have demonstrated that they have consistently demonstrated that they have met the standards for, for that class. So what you're looking at here is a student who has, in a Health Fit class, has, has been assessed on four standards, three of them are progressing and one in meeting. We have a student, now the same student, looks to be struggling a little in language arts because we have five insufficient evidence. So that could mean that a kid has been absent or hasn't done some of the work. We will have to look, dig in deeper on this student, but also has done well on three of the standards in that class. Two with the meeting standard, one at progressing. And so it's, it's no longer easy for us to say a student is passing or failing. We have to look at the individual standards and communicate those with, with teachers and students. We can go ahead and jump to the next slide. So with all that in mind, I took all of the data for both Sky Ridge and Liberty. And here's just a quick sample. I took the names out of it. And what you can see like on that row number two is we've got a sixth grade student. This is a kid who I would say is not doing very well. We have 13 of the approximately, looks like 19 standards that we've assessed for the student. 13 of them, we don't have enough evidence to give a, a clear, we don't, we just don't know where they're at because they haven't shown us enough. Four of the standards are below and two of them are progressing and none of them are at meets. So when I looked at that data, I considered if you're in the IN or BE level, that that would be an indication of low performance. And PRME would be high performance. And so you can see out of the 19, only two of the 19 are at high. So I, this gives it 11% doing well on his standards. So we collected all of that data and we have that data for all of the students. And then, again, we don't, for standards-based grading, we don't really want to boil it down to looking at a single indicator. But if we have to, if we have to look at something, we, for today's discussion, we set that cut at 60%. So a student who is in progressing or meets for 60% of their standards, we consider them in the sort of passing, doing well stage, or at least not in danger stage. And then those that were below 60%. If we had to put a label on it, would be akin to the D and F list of, of before. So I just wanted to kind of show that data and it kind of explain our system just a little bit. Clint, feel free to jump in. Dr. Williams, I'm not sure if you wanted me to talk about anything else or if you have questions for it, I'm happy to answer.
No, I think you pretty well summed it up, Gary. I know Gary spent a ton of time pulling this data, so thank you for that. If you look at that spreadsheet that was on the previous slide, it's actually like 5,000 columns long or some, or rows long. So there's a lot of data that we're looking at. And as Gary mentioned, it's really tough to boil that down to one score. In fact, we don't want to boil it down to one score. That's why we've moved away from that. We really want to know where kids are struggling specifically and where they're excelling specifically so that we can intervene when we need to in a very specific way versus just, hey, you're getting an F in science. Now we know exactly kind of which standards we need to focus on with each child.
Thank you. This team has been pretty consistently working and focused on how to grade in a more equitable, transparent manner. And the work that they are doing at their schools around standards-based grading with their teachers and parents and such. You know, it really requires a paradigm shift so that we can shift our focus to just kind of these, you know, what does an A even mean anymore, right? To know these are the specific areas where the student needs or meets standard or may need some support. So I just want to thank them for their efforts. Do we have any questions for them before we move on?
I had just one quick question. So Gary, you said that, that, or maybe it was Clint, that, you know, if a student is failing in science, you drill down and look at those standards. So these do end up creating a letter grade for students? Do they get reported out as a letter grade? Or did you just mean failing, not enough?
I, I think I, maybe I said struggling, Connie. So if a student is struggling in science, and if I said failing, that was not what I meant. If they're struggling in science, it allows us to know specifically where we can help them. It will not get changed to a letter grade at any point. So it'll stay meet standard or progressing or below standard or insufficient evidence. Hopefully they're all meet standard by the time we get to the end of the year. That's the other thing we've shifted a little bit at our schools is these are now year-long classes. So a standard that was covered in the first trimester, a kid can still go back in the third trimester if they've learned it and demonstrate to their teacher that they've learned that skill. Versus in the old system, you covered in the first trimester, it was, it was done. You couldn't really go back and fix that.
Right. How, how many pages are your report cards?
There are three right now. It's not too bad, actually.
And I'll say, actually, since I have an eighth grader at Liberty, I just got his report card today. And it's, it's very explainable to, I mean, it's easy for me to understand. And Connie, I can see where it's meet or progressing or, which helps me as a parent to know. You know, it's not just he's getting an A, B or C in math. It's like this is the skill in math that he needs help with, right? So they're not, I thought it was, I thought it was great. I just got mine today. So nice work on those.
And, and I will say, we've tried to change that terminology to it's not a report card anymore. It's a progress report because it's really where they add at the end of the first trimester, knowing that we can go back and change those things. So that's, we've tried to change that terminology a little bit, too.
Yeah, there, there are so many advantages of standards-based grading. If I had to boil, you know, just one thing to, to say would be, you know, the, the old conversation I used to have to have with a student about, you know, we've all heard this phrase like digging themselves out of a hole, right? Mess up early. We're penalizing kids for the speed at which they learn things. That no longer exists in a standards-based world. If a kid learns it five months slower than everybody else, but they learn it, why, why do we care? Why, why do we want to punish them for the speed in which it took, took them to, to learn that concept? So it, it, if done right, it should provide motivation for students instead of looking at their grades and going, how, how do I get out of this hole? It should be, all I have to do is learn this topic and show the teacher I know it. And there is no hole. There is no earning a grade. It's just, this is what I know. And if I don't know it, let me learn it and show you. So. A lot of education still needs to be done. We know that.
Yeah. And the way it dovetails with UDL, moving into UDL, providing students all kinds of different ways to demonstrate their learning. So it's not just you do this one thing and you get a grade on it. You know, I think those go hand in hand. What's difficult, I'm working in an environment with standards-based grading at the high school level where we still have to turn those into letter grades. And I think you, you lose the value of what you said, kids more focusing on what, what, what do I, what learning do I need to demonstrate? What do I need to master rather than what do I need to do to get a B? You know, so, so as long as there's a letter grade hanging out there, that's the carrot. And so it, I, I'm really encouraged that you've been able to do away with that at the middle school level. If we could just figure out how to do that and have admissions office still admit kids knowing how to read their three-page report cards and transcripts. So great work. I know this is really tough work, but I'm really excited for the progress that you guys have made.
And we, we still have letter grades, Connie, in our high school classes. So we haven't overcome that obstacle yet either. So our algebra, geometry and Spanish classes are still graded on a letter grade.
That's great. Do we have another slide?
Yes, we have just a couple more. I know you didn't necessarily ask for attendance this round, but just to kind of keep that conversation fresh, we have, this is pulled out of homeroom. And what it shows is across all of our grade levels, kind of the, the attendance pattern based on students with 90% attendance or better. So the percent of, if we look at the green bar, that's kind of in the middle there, that's sixth graders. So about 90% of sixth graders currently have at least 90% attendance. And then it kind of goes down, which is kind of typical as, you know, students get older in grades and their choice of attending 100% of the time declines. But this just was an interesting graphic, I thought. And you have access to this where you can actually read the numbers. And next slide, Jeff, please. And so this next slide, I'm trying to click on it on mine so I can see as well, is just the racial demographic, again, looking at the, through the lens of attendance. And so the, the blue bar on the left is the district as a whole. And you can see the attendance rate there. And then by each of the different racial groups, you see the attendance broken down. So you have that for your review. Next slide. And then this, this slide is broken down by services. So are students receiving special education services or ELL services, LAP, that kind of thing. Again, the blue bar is the district average on the left. And you see the attendance patterns on the right per groups of service. And again, where we have some gaps, that the smallest group there, that 41.17% of the, to the right is our unaccompanied youth. So our, our homeless youth, those are, that's where we are struggling the most in terms of helping them get connected in our, in our schools. The next slide is just kind of our racial demographic. You know, I, I'm just, it's just interesting to see this graphic shift. I've been here five years and we, we've done exercises with staff to think about, well, you know, what percent of Camus stu, of school district is white, for example? And the numbers, you know, people quote often in the eighties and nineties, but we are at 71.53% with, you know, just again, a variety of students from other backgrounds and something to be aware of and mindful of as we are engaging in conversations about how our students are doing. A couple more slides and I'll be out of your way. The next one here is about small groups. And we continue to serve a good number of small groups of students on our campus. And anecdotally, so far, students, parents are all reporting just the value of being on campus and having some structure. Students are self-reporting. When I'm on campus, I'm more focused. When I'm on campus, it's easier to connect. And even it's helped, it's spilling over into their other classes when they're not on campus. But just having at least one day or a couple of days or more a week, it's really starting to have an impact on student engagement. And over time, hopefully we'll see that mirrored in their, their grades and attendance and such. Okay, and this last slide is about our secondary in-person learning committee. So, you know, speaking to, to small groups on campus and the powerful impact that we, we are trying to have with those students. We're working with the team of teachers and administrators trying to answer some essential questions as we try to increase in-person learning. Because as you know, you've been hearing it from all sides, like, you know, open schools now or why are you not opening schools and everything in between? And that is also mirrored in our staff. And this committee is trying to take an approach that is collaborative and listens and answers to some of those concerns as we try to increase opportunities for students on campus. So this group is going to make recommendations to cabinet regarding, you know, how do we get more small groups on campus? And we're answering these essential questions, right? You know, again, students who are struggling right now, navigating staff and student concerns about safety, transitioning to hybrid, should that ever happen this year? You know, I mean, if, if that ever happens this year, how do we structure planning for multiple groups of students? So this one is around, and we, we may have some options on the table inside this group. But some of the concern is if I'm a teacher and I have teachers on video, I have teachers in front of me, I have teachers, another group, I mean, students, excuse me, in each of these different settings, how do I organize myself and time and sanity in order to manage those groups well? Should we start having more and more students on campus? So just trying to get to the nitty gritty of, of managing the logistics of, you know, bringing more students in person. And so how do you plan for multiple groups and workload? So in the coming weeks, we should have some recommendations coming from that committee. And that should be guiding our work as we try to increase the number of students on campus. More to come from that.
Any questions for Dr. Williams regarding the secondary update?
Oh, Jeff, one thing I forgot. I forgot to, I sent a link to the secondary report. So just keep your eye on that document as we continue to update the numbers of, you know, students passing classes and a demographic breakdown and that kind of things in your email.
Erica, did you have a question?
Well, and maybe this will lead into a discussion, but I saw the terminology hybrid a lot in those slides. And a question I've been getting is a confusion of small group versus hybrid. Where are we going next and what are the differences between those two definitions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that in the slides as we move towards that agenda item. 10B, I think, is the item where I'm asking for some input from you guys. So I think at this point of the agenda, because we actually have an action item related to reopening plan, I'm going to pause on the research part and some of the, the question that you just asked, Erica, and come back to that at the 10B item. We have a couple of what I think will be pretty short agenda items. And then we can get to that point of the agenda if that works for you guys. So I think I'll conclude my superintendent's report and then pull these slides up in a, in a short minute here.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Dr. Williams. We will move on to the most exciting part of the agenda that you all look forward to, our policy review. So we went through quite a few policies and I think you guys all summaries of them. We, we have a giant list, but there are some that we reviewed now and there are some that are still forthcoming. Did everybody get a chance to review the policies? I see nodding from almost everybody. Or maybe Erica's frozen. Maybe she's nodding like crazy, but she's frozen. So does anybody have specific questions about specific policies that you would like to talk about individually? Or we can approve these en masse? Sorry, was there one or two, I had questions besides one or two. Did we, did we pull any?
Yeah, this list is only the ones that had no comments or questions related to them. So anything that Connie and Corey as, as policy committee members brought up, even if it was just a, hey, I was wondering about this, those were pulled so that we could do that research and come back to Connie and Corey on that. So the list that's before you today is all the recommended changes per the Washington State School Directors Association, based on either updates in RCWs or anything like that. And then staff have reviewed those. So for example, if you're looking at student immunization, life-threatening health conditions, then you'll know that our nursing staff reviewed those to make sure that those reflect our current practices. Or if there's a change, that we have to change our procedures to reflect that policy. So it would be our, our staff's recommendation that you approve these for first and second readings and approval, which means that these would become the new policies of the district. The other ones will come back after we've done the research. So there's so many of these that we try to batch them that way for you guys, so.
And just to note that the immunization policy, this has nothing to do with COVID immunizations and it is not part of this policy. So just, I had a question from a parent recently and that, that is not addressed by this.
Yeah, it's likely that we will have an update to the immunization policy in the future. You know, but as of right now, this is the recommendations from our state associations related to school board.
I did have one quick question and I know a few guys may have discussed it and it relates to policy 2331, which is the controversial issues and guest speakers policy. And I was just curious, it noted within the policy, the policy that where there was some sort of a, a controversial topic that had opposing views, the speakers from both views would be invited into the, you know, to speak. And I didn't know, it was that going to be concurrent or, you know, sequential, one after the other? Or maybe that's just a detail that is to be sorted out depending on what you've got. But I was just curious about that because I would anticipate that if we have a positional speech or talk, that there's going to be a lot of response to somehow, you know, shout the other, the other view out as well.
Yeah, our, our staff will, there's a procedure that follows with this that really guides staff around how to address this. And of course, at different grade levels, it's going to look differently and different topics are going to look differently. And so difficult to answer that question, but we could give you some examples of, you know, like a social studies teacher at this high school level versus a social studies teacher at the middle school and how they might approach that. The spirit of it is to make sure that we are developing discourse in our students and they understand that there are going to be different perspectives on that. I, I think right away to our eighth grade units on constitutional debates that Liberty has done for a long time. And, you know, how intentionally sometimes students will have to take a different perspective on those debates and then work through it. And so, yeah, very unique to the context on, on that.
It, it is, is a great skill to develop a graceful debate character. And I think being able to look at different views with a good, clean debate style review is, is important for a student. And the delay you might have between one and the other could feed a fire, a fuel and issue. And I, I just hope that you guys are attentive to that because I can anticipate that within the next couple of years, we're likely to have those topics show up and there'll be a lot of excitement around it. And, and this gives us a chance to manage it. So, thank you. And other than, and so with that, I guess, I, I would be happy to make a motion for approval of the included policies as presented by the policy review committee, moving those to second reading and approval.
I will second that.
Oh, Erica and I both are seconding that.
Simultaneously. Any, any questions or discussions that have been moved and seconded, passed in batch as presented? All right, we will then take a vote. And this time I'll do a thumbs up and a verbal vote per recommendation. So all those in favor, I want a thumbs up and an aye.
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 Aye. And I'll note that the, it was approved unanimously. Thank you all for that. That moves us to our 10th section of our agenda, open and effective communication and looking at the district calendar for next year. And usually the process is by the time this calendar comes to us, it's gone through all of the, the labor organizations for their input and approval. I assume this is the same.
Yeah, this, this time, interesting, like every group had a different calendar that they liked, just like everything else in 2020, right? There wasn't necessarily consensus on that, but our largest group was supportive of this. And it's also aligned with our neighboring districts. It's not a year-round model. Like I know that there's been some discussion about, but for the next year, our winter breaks and spring breaks would be aligned with Vancouver and Evergreen and Babal Ground. So it does again have, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. It's, it's a calendar and annually we approve this in the December, in December months, so.
I did have questions. Would you like to, would we like to go over those now or after? Does somebody need to make motion first and then discussion?
Either way, you know, this is, I would just go ahead and ask America.
Okay. I just feel like we are at an opportunistic time to reinvent what we can and retire what doesn't serve us. And I wonder if there's been conversations with our labor organizations about continuing to adhere to an agrarian calendar or being a little inventive with a little bit more of a reduced summer break and more of a balanced learning throughout the year. When I think about prioritizing student learning, 10 plus weeks or 10 weeks off in the summer doesn't serve a lot of students in their education or in the economics for some families. And I just wonder if there's been conversations about that possible reinvention.
There's been conversations with district leadership about that. And, you know, through your engagement, that there has not been a formal review process like we've done when we changed start times. You know, that was a two-year process that started with Citizens Advisory Committee and engaged staff members. And so this process is, was the same as it's been in terms of here are options that other districts are considering and getting feedback on those options. So if we were going to do that, I, I would recommend that we would engage Citizens Advisory, you know, to do a process, doesn't have to be two years long or anything like that. But just knowing the energy that it took to move our system from flipping secondary to elementary and elementary start times and what it would require to do something like this. In the way that we've approached it in the past, certainly Evergreen just made the change to their start times and did not engage community that way. And, you know, they're still functioning and doing good things in Evergreen. So it would be something that the board would really need to weigh in on and, and direct me to engage a process and whatever that process would look like.
I believe that we pivoted the way that we delivered instruction in such a quick and, and, and just a transformative way that I believe pushing through, having this type of conversation could also, has the opportunity to be done in a speedier way and follow that path versus the path that we took with start times. And, and that would be my encouragement is to, is to have some of these conversations of the opportunities of what that could look like.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that? I would be interested in at least having the conversation of do we want to, you know, how do we want to move forward on that at some point? Because I agree with Erica, this, we are able to move at light speed when necessary, but I realize we are all maxed out moving at light speed right now. I know there's an opportunity right now, but can we capitalize on it? I also am cognizant of our kiddos who have been learning remote for almost a year now and extending that opportunity for them to learn throughout the calendar year would really be advantageous to our students. So that said, it's been moved and seconded to, oh wait, has it? No, sorry, I made that up. I'm open to a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the new calendar as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, thumbs up and an aye?
Aye.
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 And it, all those opposed? It's unanimously approved, our new 2021 district calendar. Thank you for that discussion. That moves us to a call for nomination for school board president. Can I just nominate right now? This is the time normally we do a transition. So the new president takes over in January.
I, I think Connie, we, prior to that, we have the reopening plan.
Sorry, I'm just so anxious.
So if you don't, I'll, I'll jump in on that one. And this is the continuation of the discussion we started with Doug and Dr. Williams and Gary and Clint, just sharing kind of where we're at with Kinderarten and secondary. And so I, I presenting to you guys as an action item as, as opposed to an informational item because you adopted a reopening plan back in August. And here we are in December and I don't think anybody anticipated that we would still be at step one of our reopening plan, basically, of having students serve primarily during, using remote and, and then being supplemented through small groups. And so I feel like it's an important point in time for you as a board to help give direction to staff about how to plan for the next months. You know, as we wrap up 2020 and hopefully head to a much brighter 2021. And so I want to just kind of walk through some of these factors that I think are causing us to pause and, and relook at the reopening plan. So the first is related to just COVID-19 factors, the research and current conditions. The second is social emotional factors and the third is academic factors. And so tonight, when I just look at, think about the cycle of like, I, I proposed an update to the plan just because we are governed in a five-person structure that you guys don't get a chance to deliberate on this other than the board meetings. And so to just say, what do you guys think, isn't really very responsible of me. So I humbly kind of say, this is a way forward as a proposal. And I've asked you guys over the last month or so to reflect on this and, and here we are. And so it's really important for our planning purposes for you guys to set the benchmark for us, the target. We have amazingly talented staff and if given that, that target, they're going to meet it. And it's going to require us to do a lot of solution finding before we execute that plan. And so it's really helpful for you guys to give us that guidance moving forward. So the fall research, and you heard from public comments about this tonight, that basically there's four key themes that I'm seeing in the research and we're updating in all the time and, and parents have been great about sharing things that they see as well. And so the first one is that our mitigation strategies work, that we are significantly reducing the transmission risk for students and staff when students are in person. And to that point, with the thousands of students and interactions that we've had so far to date, we have had one issue that we know of where a student and, and, or two staff members potentially got the, the contracted the virus from each other on campus. And so that's a very, very small percentage, just still an opportunity for us to do better. But the mitigation strategies are, are effective because those rates are much higher out in the general public. I shared with you a couple of board meetings ago, maybe it was the last one, about the research done on modeling and looking at the impact of hybrid and K5 phase in and not seeing a significant increase to the risk for staff and students as long as we're following those proper mitigation strategies. And so that's a powerful statement too, that we know more about than we knew in August when you adopted the plan. We also are learning that in-person learning with countermeasures doesn't increase community transmission. We're still seeing that the community transmission level is being reflected in our schools, but by having more students, we haven't necessarily seen a direct correlation to the community's rates going up. And then finally, we're seeing that student case rates are slightly lower than their community case rate and staff case rates are slightly higher than the community case rate. And this is based on the best data that we have as a nation. And it's only, it is only as good as the districts that enter data in. So it's not conclusive necessarily, but it's the best that we've got right now. And I'll talk a little more about that as we go in. So as I always do at the board meetings, I try to give you a couple of updates. And this one was just shared with me last week and it's, it's a great read. And I've linked it here. You've got to subscribe to National Geographic as a guest to read it. But you can get in there and read and they've done us a review of several large-scale studies internationally and with, in, in populations that they were actually able to really test and track what was happening. And so again, this reaffirms kind of the things, the themes that we saw that children are less likely to transmit and receive. As students get older, they start to act more like adults in all facets and even with virus transmission. And schools are going to still have transmission. So there's no zero risk anywhere in this equation. But we are still seeing that they're not the super spreader events. And so countries have continued to leave their schools open while other businesses have shut down. And we're seeing reductions in community transmission rates. So this is a, it's a really easy read and it pulls a lot of different research together. The next one is just this huge treasure trove. As you guys know, the research thing that I've linked is now like eight, 10 pages long. And this is just me cycling through and giving you guys input. This one's about 200 pages long. And what it does is it looks at topics and it tries to inform, bringing citations related to that topic. And so an example here is what's happening with transmission to and from children in the school setting and including outcomes of school opening. I, I just want to talk a little what we did with this research because I can't read 200 pages and do it justice and make sure that I'm not missing anything. And so what we did is we jigsawed this, this trove of information around these topics. So ventilation, singing in band, cleaning and sanitation. And we charged leadership in our district to look through each one, read it, reflect on our current practices and see if there's anything that we need to update. Is there something that's new about this research from two months ago when we put our plan together? And an example of that, just looking at the impact of closure on mental and physical health. And so what our leadership team was asked to do is to review, pull out salient points and then propose possible action. And so this one, based on closure of mental and physical health, is to continue to focus on SEL support and increase opportunities for students to connect and interact with each other in remote learning and in person. So that person-to-person, student-to-student interaction is really important. And then also just the importance of physical activity. You know, now that it's almost eight o'clock, I think I've been in this chair all day, basically on Zoom calls. And I know that many of you has, have as well. And so getting up and moving, how do we encourage our students and staff to do that? And so when we see this kind of thing, then we try to take action. And so like on our SEL page and our staff wellness page, Jennifer's been looking for tips on how to increase physical activity and how do we press that out to the community? You know, it's, it's, it's not going to solve everything. We're trying to go through this and stay current and update our practices to reflect what's working best in the world related to resolving this. This is that national data exploration base that I shared with you and told you we're going to talk a little more about. So we are a part of this now. Our district reports, it does two-week chunks. So it's, it's a little delayed as it captures all the two weeks. The latest data range, at least earlier today, was November 9th through 22nd. We're one of 78 districts in Washington that are reporting. We're one of 78 districts in Washington that are reporting. This map shows the scale, so the dark blue are more than 200 districts. So, you see Texas and New York are, are really, most of their districts are, are in this. And then it goes to 100 to 199 districts, which is our darker lighter blues shade like California and Illinois, those states. And then we're up there in the next level, which is 50 to 99. So, who's in the data? Right now is about 4.5 million students and 1.3 million staff members. Of all these districts that are reflected in the map, 54% of them are in some sort of reduced capacity in person. So, that would be like maybe hybrid. So, that's, that's the majority of, of the reporting districts. The next highest is 32% of these districts are at full capacity. They're just running schools as is, and then there are 14% that are in remote, and that would be us at this point. So, based on the latest two-week trend, student case rates are 19 per 100,000, and this is a daily rate, not a, we're so used to the two-week metric. So, this is daily. Staff case rate is about 43 per 100,000. And community case rate, and the way they do this is by zip code. So, they pull out the zip code of the people that are reporting, and then they look at the community case rates in there, and that's at 32 per 100,000. And that's where I said earlier in the finding that it seems like students are slightly less, staff are slightly more than the community rate, which just in your head is, is probably lines up to you because students, regardless if they're out of school, maybe their transmission rate would be higher because they're playing with each other unmasked. If they're in school or meeting that with the, with the guidance in place. And in the general population, there are people that are just isolating at home that would drive your general popular, your general case rates down. And then there's a group of people that are out in the community working, and so staff would be reflected in that. I projected it out for Canvas just in that same data range. And so, what I did is we had during those two weeks, we had three staff cases and one student case. Just to give you guys kind of, how does this correspond? So, our student case rate would have been one per 100,000, our staff case rate would have been 21, and the community case rate would have been 25.7 per 100,000 for those two weeks. So, that's a lot of data at you, a lot of math on the back end. So, I'm going to pause on that slide and see if you have any questions about the research, whether this slide or the other previous slides.
Glad I don't live in Texas. But that's not the point. I do appreciate the, the scientific and the basis for presenting this information. It's, I'm interpreting this and feeling a little bit encouraged that we, we have, we have a means of implementing some movement and not remaining in this current condition for too much longer. I feel myself leaning towards a solution and asking for some assistance from our admin team to help me understand yeah, how we can move back into small group activities, educational structure. And I know the complexities involve county health and state resolutions or state proclamations and all sorts of things that would operate contrary to any sort of, or at least complicate moving back into a small group situation, especially for our younger grade. My dream, if I were able to, would be to see all of our students in some sort of a, an in-person setting by, you know, before, somewhere around February, no later than March, if that was at all possible. But I don't know what I don't know, and I would welcome staff's evaluation and recommendation and how we might move forward and then try to implement some changes to get back to in-person, small group. I mean, you've, I've seen it, and I listened to it this evening in our kindergarten classes, and that sounds like we have methods, we have ways of doing this successfully. Others are obviously being able to do it. But I'm also sensitive to putting our teachers into an exposed position, and I want to be very cautious and measured in how we, and, and not just teachers, all of the staff that is in a building. I mean, I, being a janitor, a facilities and grounds person would be very high-risk today. And I, I, I want and I would love to see how that, how that structure, how that process might move forward and how we could be educated on the details of what an implementation might look at, look like. But obviously, again, my comments are really directed at the, I would say, K5 population. I'd love to see that group get first up. I know there's some unique difficulties with the mid and high levels. I made a few notes here. The flexibility, flexibility for teachers, flexibilities for students to either attend or choose not to, and to be able to move back and forth. If I could construct something that allowed that, I think that would be a marked success. And I'm going to stop there. I've got other notes to myself, but I, I don't want to hog the mic.
So, I, are we having this conversation right now, or you want to do some more of your slides, Jeff, and get to the, our suggested plan?
Yeah, I think I would welcome questions related to the research that I've shared with you today and the case rates. And then I'm going to walk you through current conditions and where we're at with that. And then I'm going to share a proposal for you to get your feedback on. So, i-if you have questions about that research data, please ask now. And if it's more related, I'll, I'll keep going, and then interrupt me when it feels like it's appropriate based on the content of the slide.
Sorry for the early interruption, Jeff.
No, I asked Doug, and I didn't give that frame. So, okay, so it looks like I'm, I'm okay, I'm going to proceed. So, this, I've shared this slide with you each board meeting as well and kind of show you where we're at. And so, right now, we are, we're plateauing a little bit. The data for tomorrow, in my meeting with Dr. Melnick today, they, they thought it might go up a little bit. It'll still be in the 400s is, is their guess, as they finally compute that data for the last two weeks. So, we were accelerating pretty quickly, but when you look at that, the curve is flattening a little bit. So, that's good because actually there was a concern after Thanksgiving, two weeks, that we would actually see increases even more, but still nowhere near where we, where we want that to be as a community. I think everybody agrees with that. This next indicator is very hard to predict right now because there's, if you go to the department, the Clark County Public Health site, it talks about a backlog of negative tests. And so, not all the negative tests are in the system. So, its rate is in the red over 10%. But when I asked the question to Dr. Melnick and Dr. Krager today, they are not sure when the Department of Health will be able to update that, the negative tests. That's not their focus right now as much. And so, our test positivity rate is inaccurate. It's, it's about to mid-November at best right now. And then the next area, I am moving us to the left because we have increased students. If you recall, when we first looked at this slide, we didn't have all that many students in school. So, it was very difficult to say we were practicing consistently the mitigation strategies or countermeasures because we don't have students in. Now, we're at 20% of our students, and so I can tell you that when we look at one transmission potentially, that we're, we're doing a pretty good job with our mitigation strategies. This still takes constant attention, and I'm sure every person has experienced this in the public, especially when we see media portrayals of fights about masks or this or that. And it just puts us as humans, not a very good light sometimes, that when you walk by somebody and their mask has slipped below their nose, and they may not know it, do you say, hey, your mask is down? The culture we want to create here is you say, hey, your mask is down, and that person says, oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, and puts their mask up. And so, it really requires that, that just culture of compliance, and we're constantly working on that. Another area is around being truthful about your symptoms, right? If you're not feeling well, in the past, you would just tough it out and go to work, and that might be seen as a badge of honor or something. If you've got the sniffles and you're not sure why, then like, a part of our plan is to make sure that you're being truthful about that. And I can tell you, in the feedback that we got from kindergarten families and kindergarten staff, there was great appreciation for that trust and transparency there. I'm sure it wasn't 100% perfect, but just reading the comments, people were recognizing that everyone's taking this seriously. So, we're moving on this, and I'd like to be firmly over here as we increase more and more students and get more practice with this. So, that's the kind of the research and the COVID activity level. So, that's the first of the three indicators that I want to give you information on tonight. The second and third are social and academic, and this is why we spent so much time with the kindergarten and the secondary, because I wanted you to have context for what's going on right now. You guys remember previously, and this was cited in one of the public comments, that we did have indicators around social emotional feelings for our students. And the big areas that were concerning that you guys brought up in that board meeting was their connection to adults and their connection to their peers. And so, that is definitely a mitigating factor that we're really struggling with despite teachers' best efforts in remote learning. It's really hard for kids to feel connected with each other right now. The other thing that I continue to bring forward to you guys is the state report on mental health behavior. And so, the, the most recent forecast is here, quote from it, "The rest of 2020 and early 2021 will likely be defined by experiencing the disillusionment phase of disaster recovery as we navigate the current stresses related to a third wave of infection rates and higher rates of hospitalization. The risk of suicide, depression, hopelessness, and substance use historically are at their highest during this phase of any disaster, matching what we are seeing at this current time. This is leading to a corresponding need for behavioral health services." And so, you know, I, I, I think they're stating the obvious there, that we're, we're at the bottom of this curve of working through a disaster. But the good news right now is that we're seeing light, right? Like, we're seeing that this is going to, this is not forever. We had news today that the first vaccines, vaccinations arrived in the state of Washington. And so, there's lots of progress being made. So, I really see this as a three-month challenge right now. Like, how do we, how do we get the best opportunities for our kids in January, February, and March? And make sure that we're making sure students and staff are safe as well as we get to that light at the end of the tunnel. So, this is where I really am, am going to just kind of pause, and Tracy, probably your, your feedback would fit into this or the timeline, which is the next, next part of this. But in order for our staff to do their job, and Dr. Williams mentioned that secondary team, is they really need some parameters from you around this. We established the parameters around hybrid, and we've just been waiting, right? Like, the, the rates have been three to four times higher than that, that limit, and we were all ready to execute hybrid. And so, what we've done is implement small groups per the guidance and continue to increase that. And so, the kinds of parameters that, that I think would be helpful for us is that when we plan, you know, if you think it's important, then we would want to follow and involve students and staff and families in that planning. So, if we're talking about kindergarten involving students, looks a little different than if we're involving high school students, right? But our high school students know what they need right now, right? And it may not be going to six classes, it may be just having a place to connect, and we can potentially provide that. So, as a board, if you were to direct us to come up with some ideas and make sure those ideas have been worked with staff, students, and families, that would be a nice parameter for us. The other thing that we know right now is that kindergarten groups have worked. We have zero transmissions at our kindergarten level, our staff are doing an amazing job. You saw the feedback from families, and so potentially we could start with small groups and continue to expand grade levels, right? That, the guidance allows us to do that. And, and so, that, as long as we're using our countermeasures and mitigation strategies, that could be a parameter that you set for us. You could start, say that we want to continue to think about the highest need students per the decision tree. And so, a great place to build would be, you know, first and second and third grade are defined as younger learners by the state, and the, the decision tree calls out younger learners as highest need, need students. Certainly, we've seen that the workload issue is really difficult. As teachers are transitioning in particular, that's really difficult. And so, thinking about as we develop this, to continue to have structures that allow for time for the remote learning, so that teachers know that this is a day that they can work on remote learning and support students that way. I think a huge one is that, you know, if, if each student, if they desire, and we recognize that probably about 15 to 25% of our families and students, this, it's just not an option for them this year to come in person for a lot of really good reasons. And there's no judgment about that at all. We, we certainly have staff in that situation as too, and we need to work through the process to support them. But if a kid wants to come to school, you know, at some point, we've got to create an experience for them to come to school. And so, that would be a parameter that you could potentially set or adjust. And then finally, because we, this isn't the end, this is this transition, that whatever we put into place that would support us building hours and building to hybrid and building to full in-person, kids haven't been in school for a while. You know, we, we, we would love to say that everybody's just going to come in and be ready to go, but we have kids that are going to be really nervous about coming to school. And so, anytime we can get them in in a small group and given them experience, that's just going to make the transition all the better on the back end. And so, I know you guys have seen these parameters before, and I just would love your feedback on them if this is, you know, if this is where you're thinking as a board, or if we need to amend these in any way.
I think this is where my question comes in on that, where we're currently at with hybrid and what Department of Health says hybrid is currently from small groups. And then, so what it looks like today, what it needs to look like for us to transition to a different plan?
Thanks, Erica. So, basically, we're defining small groups as 10 students or less and having some sort of altered schedule, so it's not a full day. So, we're really building towards where as a hybrid would be, you know, basically a cohort A and a cohort B, a full-day schedule where students would be two days a week and moving that direction. And so, that, that was, that's, it's not Department of Health. If you look at the decision tree, it won't spell out exactly a hybrid versus a small group, which gives us a little flexibility. But our way we defined hybrid was that cohort A, cohort B, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday in between, where half of your class would be on one day, or in cohort A, and the other half would be on the other day. And if you recall, we, we did that physical distancing exercise with the capacity of all of our schools. And our secondary, we, it was tighter at Canvas High School, but we could do A and B cohort. And our elementary's capacity actually allowed for all kids in, at, at school. I, it's, it's a tough, there isn't like a definitive clear on that, but we've defined 10 students or less and, and a shortened school day.
So, I would piggyback on some of what, what Doug said there is that we have seen the success in the kindergarten. So, I really would like to, you know, push for the, the youngest learners, and whether that's K2 or even K3, if we can get the K3 moving back into small groups, that would be something that I would really like to see happen with our plan coming up. And then also, I know that it also says that our students of highest needs are ones that we can get back into class. And I would argue that all of our students are high needs at this point because over 80% of them have not been in a classroom since March. So, how do we get the 4th through 12th back in the small groups? And, because they should all be considered high need or farthest from educational justice. I think that's some of the other language that's in there. So, but for sure, I really want to build on the kindergarten success and see how we get those K3 back into those small groups. And then, I think Doug mentioned that have some sort of in-person experience for all students who want it by the end of February would be, I, I think, a goal that, that I think that we could set if that's achievable.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, by looking at the, by looking at the research, by, you know, seeing what we've done with our, with our kindergarten kids so far, and especially seeing the research around younger kids, I, I could, I, I could get behind, get behind increasing our opportunities for, for the younger learners, like, like Tracy was just saying, K2, K3. I think choice is still really important there. I think choice is important for staff as well. I just worry that choice is a nice thing to think of, but it's at some point, at some point, you know, what if every, every teacher in one grade just feels they don't want to go in? How do you, you know, I, I feel like we're, we're setting ourselves up for some trust issues here. And so, I don't have an answer to that, but I do think that that is an important thing for, for our, our admin team and for our, our, our labor leaders to be talking about and to be engaging in that, that respectful but honest conversation right now. Because I, I also just think about, you know, I, I'd like to hear a little bit more from the kindergarten teachers about how this experience has been for them in terms of workload. I know as a teacher myself, fully remote is hard. I can imagine that doing both of them is, is just as hard, if not more, you know, more difficult. I can imagine that doing both of them is, is just as hard, if not more, you know, more difficult. And there are only certain, you know, only so many hours in the day. And, and already I think the lines between work and personal life have been completely obliterated. And, and I do worry about the, the, the mental health of our, of our staff as well. Not that, not that the rest of us here don't, but that is something that, that weighs on me a little bit. And I want to make sure that if we're doing these in-person opportunities, that we are seeing results, positive results in terms of engagement and achievement and those kinds of things. And it's not, it's not something that we're just doing because we're, we're trying to, we're trying to quiet the loudest voices in the room or something like that. I want to make sure that it's really data driven and there is a, there is a point behind it.
Corey, on the, there's a full link to the report from the kindergarten staff, teachers, paras and administration that you can read through all their thoughts on there too, that's included in the, in the packet that was sent. So if you want to explore that further, it's available.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move to the timeline slide then that doesn't prohibit you from going back or anything like that. So so this is where we've been. So within the framework, you know, you guys have asked me to continue to expand small groups and we've done that incrementally. And we took the pause. And so now when we look to the future, you know, just based on the conversation at the last board meeting, I, I, I took that and kind of thought, okay, where might the board want to go as a starting point? And so looking in January, first on the right side is this staff meeting town hall cycle has been very valuable for us. And so what we've done is every four to six weeks, we've have an all staff meeting. And then the next week we have a town hall meeting. And then after that, we have school meetings based on whatever actions taken. And our community has been amazing at participating in these now both on demand or live. So that's great. And we want to continue that, that, that cycle. And so thinking about January, wherever we're at, having another staff meeting, having a town hall and using the thought exchange to vet out, you know, what are all people thinking and making sure all voices can be heard in that? So we would have our backbone still as remote learning, but serving small groups, the cohorts with the highest need, serving kindergarten students. And then we would add grades one and two. And one and two would be in place by the end of January and we'd start to transition potentially grades three through eight and adjust to any updates in the Department of Health guidance. In February, if you recall last meeting, we talked about February being a key point for our high schools because of semesters flip. So we're going from first to second. So in February, that transition for grades three through eight would have happened. So small groups, and I want to make clear that we know what small groups look like at kindergarten. But to, to Erica's point, we don't have small groups necessarily, what that could look like for seventh grade students or sixth grade students who have never, never attended a class in their middle schools. And so we want to empower the group that, that Dr. Williams talked about to define what that small group could be based on what students are telling us, families are telling us, and staff are telling us. And so some of the districts that we've looked at, either in the state or across the country, like as an example, high school students might not go to their sixth period classes, but they might go to advisory for a large chunk of a time one day to make connections, to meet with teachers, to do whatever it is they need to do to have some sort of community in a small group. And then we could build from there. So it, it, I, I, I want to challenge us to think that it's not just we're having ten kids navigate the traditional schedule at Liberty Middle School. Right? We need to, this is a time where we can be really creative and think about the safety restrictions and the fears that are out there. And how do we mitigate those while really having fun with kids? Like bringing them in and having some fun and building some community. And so by the end of February, K eight would have those processes in place. And nine twelve would be starting that transition. And so by the end of March, so when we hit spring break, all students would have small group in, in, in-person learning experiences, whatever that looks like, based on some of the parameters from the previous page. You know, I, I believe that by the time we get to spring break, there's going to be a lot of information more about vaccines. There's going to be changes in what our metrics are, hopefully that will flatten those out. And we'll already be in hybrid because we have met the standard that the Department of Health sets. But if we're not, and we're still in this, you know, as I mentioned before, we're fourteen percent of the country is in remote learning only of the reporting districts. And so each day, you know, is one less day of the hundred and eighty that we have allocated for each student. And I think that this plan allows us to at least start making progress on that and giving students and families some hope about this and staff too. You know, it's, it's, and, and staff, students and families all have the same concerns and the same hopes and the same. You know, as I was talking to Shelley Hool today from CEA, she shared their survey feedback. And, you know, Shelley's in a difficult position as well because she has staff that want to come back now. And she has staff that have some real legitimate concerns. And so how do we thread the needle with that? And I think it's, it's through this small group action. Today with Dr. Milne, I also shared what, what, what you guys were going to be deliberating on today. And he was in support of that kind of incremental approach. Because it's, it gives you the ability as a board by slaying it out in this kind of way to say, hey, Jeff, the rates look better, let's accelerate that timeline a little bit. That one's a little harder because of the planning purpose, but we can if we need to. On the other side of that is like, wow, this is out of control right now in the community and we need to back off. And so we're gonna just slow things down and we can manage that through this plan. You know, related to the Department of Health update, you know, we've, we've been cued through some media articles that, that that was gonna come. Governor Inslee called for another, I'm on the superintendent like advisory counselor or something. And so I got to meet with him Friday again. And I, I, I just don't feel like there's going to be necessarily state direction on this. I think they're gonna continue to say that it's a local decision, which is really difficult because they're saying it's a local decision while they're providing state guidance from the Department of Health. So it doesn't really feel like a local decision when they, when they say it that way. So I, I'm, I am appreciative of the role that you have as a volunteer elected school board member to take this on in such, such a really hard time to be a leader right now. And the thought and consideration that you're giving to this. I think this kind of timeline allows us to really work closely with our staff, starting with the elementary and then building from there. And I believe in our staff that they're an amazing group that can, that can come to solutions. But I think it's going to be challenging no matter where we go. So I'd love to hear your comments on the timeline and any of those parameters again.
That was a nice summary, Jeff. Thank you. And I feel like you're, you're aimed in a direction that I can be supportive of. And you've touched on the issues, the variables, the parameters that need to be addressed. I think the one thing I haven't really heard a lot of talk about is I would anticipate some budgetary implications and would hope that you could speak to those. Because I, I can't believe that we'll be able to do contact tracing, to do facilities, disinfection, have teachers with a degree of flexibility without a lot of support somewhere in that structure. And even, even cleaning buildings and preserving our grounds. I, I mean, I could not, this is not a problem that I can see clearly. I'm sure you see it more clearly than I, and it probably scares you just a little to think about it. But the timeframes and the, the lean that you're putting into this, I can easily support.
Related to the finance, it is, it's, there's a lot of unknowns with that. We saw that last week that the federal government indicated that they may have a second relief package, which could affect us in a positive way. However, the way they distribute those funds through title free or reduced kinds of mechanisms don't benefit our district to receive those kinds of funds as much. I think in the last go around, we were anywhere from one-fifth to one-tenth, one fifteenth of what other neighboring districts received in that COVID package. So you've got an unknown around relief, you've got an unknown around a legislative session. We have a levy vote in February around our renewal. So we have a lot of, of variables at play. But we also, you guys, we, we, we planned for this to be a year that was going to be challenging because of the transition and our loss of regionalization and the McCleary structure. And so we were planning to use reserves this year. And honestly, at, at this point, if it's, if it's something that's best for students, we're gonna move forward with it and try to figure out how to support it. And then we'll figure out what we need to do on the, on the back end, just because we are in a crisis that we've never been in before. And kids are struggling and staff are struggling. And so we really need to invest in that. So you heard Doug say that one of the highest feedback items for kindergarten was the importance of paraprofessionals in there to support the transition. Now, the first time we do it with our youngest learners is probably the most complex. So hopefully we'll get better at that over time. But we need to provide that same support to our first and second grade or third grade if they're transitioning as well. And that's not the model that we've had before. And we're not efficient on our transportation or, you know, all the efficiencies that we had in our model before are kind of thrown out the window. But this is the time to, to invest, this is the time to use our reserves to figure that out. And so I guess I'm, I'm gonna err on the side of saying yes on these staffing requests or needs. We'll still scrutinize everything, but we need to, we need to deliver for our staff and make sure they have what they need to be successful.
I encourage, as, as speedily as we can, put small groups together back in person with the simplicity, it's not, of, of understanding the complexities of, of transportation and schedules and communication that goes all around all of that. It does need to be simple and clear. And, and for staff and families to wrap their arms around what it looks like, the what ifs. And what if, and this is what it looks like, this is what will happen, this is what we will do. But here's what a day looks like. And then here's what, well, you know, what we hope to have it look like to. I think we've talked about that before, maybe, I don't know, it feels like ten years ago. Maybe it was late, late spring, early fall, when we talked about what a day in the life could look like. I think it's time to come back to that and start, and start talking. I appreciate the, the team that I saw Clint being a part of that is creating and envisioning and coming up with the questions around that. And, and I, I, I appreciate that and say, and let's keep that going and, and, and pull that out even more. But I, I know we need to get choice and opportunity.
I would agree, oh, sorry, Connie, if you were gonna go, I, just a few more things I just wanted to say. I, I am in full support of the plan. And I think, like I said, if we could get K three in, in that small group, I, I would like that if, if that's possible. I think any in-person meaningful instructional learning time, we can get our students, I mean, that they need that in the small group setting. And the other comment I had, I feel like I am forgetting right now, but I might come back to that.
I've written down a, a list of things. First thought is that our students that, that big, and I, I'm, I'm a little bit more focused on secondary because I'm living in that world in the daytime. Our list of students with Fs, I would assume they're high priority for some academic intervention coming in face to face. I, I would, I would like to see every kid have an academic experience in school. I know some kids are meeting for extracurricular activities and things, but I think that the academic focus and to be able to be in a classroom, I think that will provide social experience. I know I'm experiencing kids coming into our school building and sitting in detention like one person at a table in a cafeteria, you know, doing their own thing with teachers coming to them every now and then, they couldn't be, they're thrilled. Where it, back in the day, you know, last year, they would have been bored out of their mind at that experience. But just to be on campus is so great for kids, even better if they could go into a classroom. Second question, have we already done the survey for our families to find out how many families prefer to stay remote moving forward?
Yes, but what we've learned about the surveys is that when the conditions change, people, you know, so basically we've done the district level survey. And that was wrapped up in, in October, November, and then each school now is owning that data. So with the kindergarten, then we resurveyed the kindergarten group. If we were gonna go to first and second, for second and third, we would resurvey that group. And we would do it from the school level as opposed to the district level. Because what we found is those connections that, that they know the, the parents and the same people are responding to the district one and the same people aren't responding. And so we'll, we'll kind of manage that as we incrementally grow as to who would like to participate. Part of it is like, if you, if you guys approve this, then that gives us the, the direction to create the experiences and to understand what the students at Hayes Freedom want in that experience. And then to Erica's point, deliver what that could look like, a day in the life of this experience and match that up as opposed to us prescribing at a, at a district level that we know what every ninth grader across the district wants and needs. And so it would be Discovery High School working with their ninth graders, Hayes Freedom working with their ninth graders and Camas High working with their ninth graders to create that academic, social, emotional experience.
And then next question, so you said that, that we've already figured out the building capacity. So socially distanced, how many kids each student can handle? Will we be bringing small groups in up to that capacity?
No, it's this plan, we are sticking with the ten or less metric that we created with kindergarten. Now, that's just a starting point. Like, as I mentioned, I think to Erica's question of like, what's the difference between hybrid and small person, small groups? It doesn't, it doesn't specify what the difference is. So the reason we got ten is because we worked with Clark County Public Health as a region to determine this kindergarten transition. And that was where they felt comfortable with. They're not gonna come in and tell you that you can't do eleven or twelve. But that, that's where the small group came. When we look at our physical capacity, it's all geared for hybrid. And so we've audited every classroom and teachers have had a chance to, if they disagreed with that initial audit, to have a conversation. So we have all that logged, you know, so you could, you'd say, well, what's room one sixteen at Camas High School's capacity? And we could tell you that. And then we would be able to go up to that in a hybrid model or an in-person, full in-person. But unless the Department of Health guidance changes, that six foot distance places some limitations on the classroom space. And at a high school level in particular, it's more difficult because that's where you see some classes that are, are larger. You know, if you have a single physics AP class, you know, it could have forty kids in there if that's the one class that's offered.
Right. I was just wondering, so if we, if we could have a maximum of ten kids per group, we could have multiple groups in the building at the same time. And I, I assume each building is putting together a plan for what that number is. And then how many, you know, do you have kids come in for two hours from eight to ten and then a ten to twelve and a twelve to two?
With your direction, with your direction, plans would be put in place to do that.
I, I would like to see how we can maximize that. I have a pretty good idea for elementary school. Because we, you know, the, the way that they stay in one classroom most of the time lends itself to that. But with middle and high school, for each of the schools, I'd like to see how quickly we could do that. And what it would look like, what, what does that look like for a student? Does it, are they on campus one day a week for two hours a day? Do they go for a week, every four weeks? Do that, you know, what, how can we get the most kids in the building safely to get academic exposure, catch up? I also, because I feel like the, the, the high level of Fs that we have right now correlate exactly to what the middle school principals were talking about. No evidence shown yet. I don't think kids are doing work. No evidence shown yet. I don't think kids are doing work and failing it. I think they're not doing work. We don't have enough to grade them, right? That that's been our experience at my school. And so just. And 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 I've heard as well, I'm more productive when I'm in the building. So the the faster we can get. Small group, you know, and I think there's a way that we could get a lot of kids in the building at the same time, but then what about transportation? So we have to figure that for all these moving parts, but. I would like to see a plan of how fast we could do that, and especially at the secondary level, the beginning semester two. Do our do our schedules at every school support this?
That's what that's the run-up time, why the the benchmarks on, you know, grades three through eight were at the end of February and, you know, fully implemented and then fully implemented at the high school level by the end of March. Just to empower these teams to figure out what that looks like and. And to to share those plans with you as a board as we move forward. So. To your point, Connie, I think we can replicate what's happening at kindergarten and what we've learned there incrementally adding grades at the elementary level. And we probably have a little more flexibility at the middle school level to do that. And then. At the high school level, it gets a little more complicated. And so we'll have to think a little out of the box. But I know Dr. Williams has brought in. You know, other guest speakers to kind of challenge the group and think, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And the this is real opportunity, you know, if we chunk it and think about these three months. Like, it's the one time in your career that you can really think differently about how you bring kids together, right? Like, it's. And that's where we need to listen to the students too. Because, you know, we as adults may have ideas about what they need. But maybe that's not what they need. And so really involving them in the planning and seeing saying, you know, like. You know, until this vaccine hits, it's going to be hard to get everybody in every day. So tell me, if if you had one day. What would it look like? And and maybe we can create that for them, right? And the the challenge we're going to have is on the staffing front. And Corey, I appreciate, you know, your acknowledgement of trying to work with. Each staff member and and it for the most part, Doug and the team did a great job at the kindergarten level. But there will be a point where, like you said, that the the flexibility, there's a there's a turning point, right? Like, there's either more students that want to be served by the staff that are available. And so then what do you do with that? And the other piece is that schools are. It's the quarantines and the, you know, the asymptomatic symptomatic cases that are putting a person out for 10 days that are. Causing schools to have to close down and go back to remote because there's not enough physical bodies. And so when we say about maximizing the number of students, I just want us to be cautious to think about the workload of staff as we scale that up and making sure that we have staff ready. That if you're out for 10 days, then what do you do? Right? And that's already happened in our small groups. I know I was just talking to Clint the other day and they had a small group ready to go. And then. That teacher had, you know, they they didn't feel well, so we need to report it and he can't come in. So now what do we do? Right? So those are struggles that those other districts are dealing with right now that we will be experiencing. But I think I I and a teacher told me this too. I think it was Mr. Heinz at Liberty said that I can't let perfect get in the way of being good enough for my kids. And so I don't have it. He was talking about his experiences and I don't have it all figured out. But I'm going to keep trying to 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 figure it out and I'm going to give some good experiences to our kids moving forward.
You know, Jeff, I also think that our. By demonstrating that we can do it right. Will be a good will be a good way to. Ease some of the the anxiety among staff as well. I think once we see it, I think, you know, success breeds success. So if we can show that we can do this in small groups and if then that means that more people, students want to take advantage of small groups, then. Hopefully that will mean to that, you know, staff see that it can be done.
I also just want to put. One more plug in for our high school schedules to roll the nine through 12 out by March when their. Semester starts at February, if that rollout is going to impact their schedule. Or what class if they have to change electives or what classes they have to take, especially at Hayes and Discovery. If we could at least get those plans in place so we can make those adjustments to schedules before semester starts. That will ease that transition and so we can pop into it at any time. But. Yeah, my feedback is I would like kids back in the building. They need it for their social emotional health. They need it for their academic learning and. I think just to help them process the trauma that we're all experiencing.
And and Connie, your point is like, I would want those schedules in place, even though we weren't fully implemented. But but we would be planning to implement based on that, right? So. With the change in the schedule, we might not be ready to have all nine through 12 back at that time. But maybe it's ninth grade, small groups are meeting at the beginning and then we're adding a grade level as we understand. Because one of the great things about adding kindergarten is, boy, we learned a whole lot about systems at the elementary level. So really, you know, we want to start with our middle schools in a similar way that those small groups, we already have small groups in there, but it's a different thing when you're having. The volume coming in. So really being smart about that initial. And then expanding more grade levels at a time. Once we've got that dialed in and staff feel comfortable to Corey's point because. Like, this is hard and and I don't think, I hope that nobody, there is no judgment if you're somebody that's like, we got to get in now. And or if you're on the other side saying, I'm worried about coming in like that. All those are really valid in this. And so starting with like. Building on the volunteers and then also trying to just build success and learn from it as we go. And and I, you know, CEA, their leadership has been phenomenal. And, you know, Shelley meets with Dr. Williams and Doug and Marilyn every Monday to talk about this and the teachers that are on these panels. Like, we we need to empower them. So when, you know, if you guys approve this update, then, you know, they're the ones that are going to help us figure that out, right? Like, they're they're they know their kids.
I had. One other comment, and that really was just. Of course. All this is with all of our safety measures. I want kids to get in as as much as possible, but. Safely, right? So I I'm saying, you know, charge ahead, but that's I'm not advocating for let's bring everybody back to school tomorrow full-time. Let's see how we can. Safely be really creative and put kids back to school. And like you said, we're going to have to think out of a box, out of the box. You know. Maybe kids come in for two weeks at a time and then they're. Gone for a matter of time. And I also wanted to put a plug in for. Prioritizing our seniors, getting them back in the building because they don't have a next year to come back and regain. Those connections.
So Jeff, you'd you had indicated earlier that this was a decision. Act on action item this evening. Do you have a? You have the plan. You've articulated the elements of that now. How how much more specific in an emotion or action from the board do you need?
So I think it's important because we adopted a plan back in August and we've used that plan to move forward is to. Adopt an update to the plan so that we can post it with the plan that has the research that has the information that we've talked about. We've had, we've had about 75 people in this board meeting tonight. And 57 are hanging in there with us. But I think it's important that they have access to that information and the research behind it. And so there's been some discussion here today about one like prioritizing academics. Prioritizing our seniors. Tracy advocated for third grade, maybe with the K three. So there's some potential adjustments, but in general, I think the spirit that I'm hearing is start with early. Our youngest learners and come up with a plan that can, we can come back to you on January 11th at that board meeting with this is what it's going to look like. At least in the phase one of our elementary. And then here's our plan for the secondary. These are the kinds of ideas that we're coming up with. And how it affects the semester and the scheduling and those kinds of things. That I think allows us to start to be creative. And figure it out. It allows hopefully those rates to continue to flatten and decline hopefully over the next three to four weeks. So there's still some variables at play, but it it it. It puts us into first gear, I guess, and and starting to get some momentum as it feels like we've been in neutral and and revving the engines, but not really getting. A lot of progress despite great effort from students and staff. So my decision point tonight was either reject the update and just stay with the current plan, you know, and. It it allows for small groups, but it doesn't spell it out. The second alternative was to provide me feedback where I could adjust that which which you guys have. And the third would just be to adopt it as it is written. And I think that I can take what you guys have told me tonight and add that in. And then update the the guidance. Not the guidance, our reopening plan. Sorry, I don't have the authority to update the Department of Health Guidance.
So at that point, you would present that information for review, possible approval on the 11.
Yeah. With the direction that you guys have given me tonight.
Is it realistic for our staff to come up with? That for January 11th, I realize that's really two working weeks. And I'm I'm sure thinking with something, but not. You know, to the level that will need the details.
Well, I not not K 12. It's not realistic, but looking at what we did with kindergarten and having a plan for replicating. You know, other younger learner grades is very reasonable. And I'm thinking just honestly, taking what I have tonight and making some adjustments or notes about what you've shared. And so like in the parameter saying. That let's prioritize seniors because this they don't have another opportunity with this. Let's consider accelerating third grade. You know, so I I think that the timeline as written is is basically what I'm hearing from you guys, but there's some subtle adjustments around the parameters of that. And so, you know. Your endorsement of that tonight allows me to do that work and make those adjustments and. Share with our staff and our community of where we're at.
I think that sounds great. I. I think it's also important to reiterate that our ability to. To entertain a plan like this and to be to may be making plans like this is so informed of about by the ongoing research that we have received. You know, when we're at 61 cases per 100,000 in September and we're. You know. Worried, we knew it was going to go up and it was above 75 and. You know, but we had no data to to inform us that it was safe in school. So we have the advantage of. Learning from other districts and other countries how they've done this to to inform a decision that is different than than how we started school. That to me is what's making the difference.
So I'm just going to bring this slide back up because this is, this isn't the part that I necessarily would adjust. So I would, maybe we can take action on this part. Tonight to just and then I can make the parameter adjustments. But when you look at this again. Notice that it has first and second grade students in January. It says, starting the process of transitioning. Third and eight. So I think that does give us what you're talking about, Tracy, is potentially accelerating that if it if it fits. And then some of you guys talked about, is this soon enough? But I want to note here that. This is saying that we would start the transition for nine 12 at that semester. It's just not saying that everybody would be in there yet. It's it's when we hit March that we would be able to to use those four weeks to get us to that point. And then it does have targets in here too, around 80% of our students. Now, I I put this in based on our rates of what you asked Erica about the survey. And it's been tending to trend around 80, 20. And so. I I I don't want to force people in, right? That choice is important, like Corey said. But I think it's reasonable to say that by the time we get to the end of February. We've had a run-up and so we should be able to be getting these kids in, even if it's just once a week. To support them as. And so that's where I'd be asking for you to weigh in tonight. And, you know, you could say, no, I would like you to come back in January and refine that further. Or you could say, yes, I'll I'm OK with that kind of an update. I think I have the direction I need, but I think it would be important to also have you guys weigh in on.
So are we looking for a motion at this point to approve your? Time? Do you need a motion to carry on? And I think what you've described is you would. Incorporate some of our changes into this, but we could approve that as it was presented for you to make the changes to our reopening plan.
Yeah, Tracy, I would make those in the parameter section of the opening plan based on what you guys described to me today. Flexibility. You know, seniors, academic, some of those things.
OK, so if you're looking for a motion, then I can make a a motion to approve your revised. Reopening plan for our discussion.
I would second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye and a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I didn't hear your eye, Doug.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Unanimously voted that we will. That we've just adopted, Jeff, your timeline for moving forward. With bringing small groups in at the rate that you laid out. And you'll provide refinement to the. Details.
Thank you. I know this is an easy decision and you guys have been navigating this. Really difficult challenge, but I I do believe that this gets us to a point where we're going to be able to better meet student needs and. I'll I'll take all the the comments and questions to heart as we plan these, so. Connie, we're now at the point of the agenda for the call for nominations for the school board president, and I think you froze.
Oh, oh, no. Am I frozen? Can you hear me?
We can now. We can now.
OK. Well, now is the time in our agenda. As we do at this time every year. We pass the baton. We rotate through basically being president and vice president. And what a joy it's been to be a president through this. Virtual meeting. Format. But it's time to pass the baton. And since I don't know if I can make motions as the president. I don't think I can. I think somebody has to. Motion. Make a motion for.
Then I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Tracy Malone as our next president.
And I would second.
Been moved and seconded that Tracy Malone become our fearless leader as board president. All those in favor say aye.
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 I vote for myself.
Congratulations, Tracy.
I'm honored. Thank you, guys, for the for the confidence. And Connie, you've done a great job, so I have big shoes to fill here. So. I'm excited to take on the role.
If you can just keep the agenda in order and be able to do the pledge of allegiance, you will have surpassed me. So. 100%.
They're only size eight, so you would be hurting.
Yeah. And then it goes to the nomination for our vice president. And I think because this is like having twins and who's older when Corey and Erica were. Sworn in on the same night, but moments apart. So we will open up the nominations for our vice president, which is. Going to be one of those two cats.
Well, as his twin, can I please nominate Corey, my twin Corey McHenry for a vice president?
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded that Corey becomes our next vice president. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I I don't know if I'm supposed to vote for myself, but yeah, OK.
Yeah.
You can't vote against yourself.
OK, there's there's no getting out now.
It's unanimous that Tracy and Corey will take the lead. Next month. And and does Tracy take over actually January 14?
January 11th, whenever that.
Not that she's counting.
Oh, OK, if you have to. No, this is just, I I I appreciate the fact that we all rotate through these positions every several years so that we we. Understand their responsibilities and share the load and. And I know that in this last year. We've managed it as a group as we always do. And, you know, one person has different responsibilities, but we all face this as a team and. We will continue to do that. So. OK. I will cry. Kidding.
So Connie, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
In the role and really appreciate your leadership. This has been a tough year to be president and so you've done it with grace and humility and a positive attitude. And so we really appreciate that leadership. And Tracy and Corey, thank you guys for continuing this leadership role and I hope for a little smoother sail in 2021. And maybe we're back in person for our board meetings and all the all the good stuff about being a board member. Not that this isn't good, but this is, this is some tough leadership. So we really appreciate Connie and looking forward to Tracy and Corey. So and there's one final item tonight. It's the post-closing member of under memo of understanding with Sharp. This has been a long time. As Sharp has vacated that property, there's been negotiations between them and us and the city and just improvements that needed to be done that were a part of the purchase. And so this is a long time coming, but it should also be celebrated that with the purchase of this property, we were able to deliver an extra school in the 2016 bond. And so it's, I don't, I have not heard of another district that is able to deliver an extra school like that. I'm sure there are many districts that have, but it's it's awesome and that that campus has been an asset and will continue to be an asset for a long time. And so this this wraps that up. And there's some credits still as part of the process. So future projects that were credited based on some of the work that we've done around infrastructure improvements for the city with this. So with this motion, we're kind of closing out a little bit of a chapter. And I would be remiss without calling attention to Casey Odell's leadership on the board. And really, as a representative of Sharp, to recusing himself from the process of of a board action, but then on the other end of it, really being a great partner with Sharp on how to navigate all this, the complexities of separating the fire fiber, separating the water and all these things that we've pulled apart from the two entities so that we could have our campus and move forward. So I wish Casey was around tonight to to kind of compliment him with this, but I'll send him a message.
I would move for approval of the memorandum of agreement or understanding as presented by staff, authorize signature.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? With that, I will bring it to my last vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Up. It's unanimous. Thank you. And with that, um, we bring our board meeting to a close. We are adjourned at 8:44. Go get some dinner, everybody.
Record for your last one there, Connie.
Yeah, the record was, I think I had the shortest meeting and I don't think this was the longest meeting though.
Connie, thank you. It's been, it's been fun. It's been an odd year, but so cool.
I get that.
Let's also keep in mind, though, she's not going anywhere.
No, not far anyway. Well, I think according to
She's moving to the end of the day.
You're going to go to the right now.
Yeah, I'm going to the right.
Well, actually, though, see now that seating chart doesn't even apply because you guys keep moving around my screen. I can't.
We need to be back in person so you can do the Milltown pride stamp.
Yeah, if you're at the end, you get to be the stamper. And now she froze up for her final, for her final goodbye. She's frozen.
It's her famous college dance move right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're going to close the meeting now. So happy holiday.
Do the Connie.
Good New Year.
I love it. All right.